I don't know how to do that.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We better ready? Ready? 306, let's stand for the pledge, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, go on roll call. Let the record show Bob, Doug, Carol, and Ed are present, and Flavia is...
Joining later.
I'm sorry?
She'll be joining later.
So we need to hold off on that?
Yes, sir.
Motion till then?
Yes, sir.
Approval of final agenda. I've got a couple of items. One, we want to move line item 13A up to 9A. And we want to add an item for what? The HMGP grant?
Yeah, yeah.
Resolution?
Authorizing resolution, yes.
Okay, and where do we want to put that?
You put that under 9.
So that'll be 9B.
You don't want to put Stony Brook litigation under consent. Let's just move it to 11A.
Okay.
Okay.
You want it to 11A?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, let's put it to 11A.
So Stony Brook consent will go to 11A, and 9A will be the...
Authorizing resolution.
Authorizing resolution on the grant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Aye, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Public comment? We have a public comment?
I have four. I have three agenda items and one non-agenda item. Just a reminder, you get three minutes. When you get up to the... Hang on just a second. When you get up to the... When you get to the podium, please announce yourself, so your name is in the record. First up, we have David Hamilton regarding 13B. And I'll start your time after you announce yourself.
Okay, my name is David Hamilton. I'm on the Pelican Preserve Board of Directors. Thanks for allowing me to speak here. Pelican Preserve would very much appreciate the Board of Supervisors agreeing to mediation, so we can work through this cooperatively and collaboratively. Our experts' opinion indicates that portions of the maintenance assessment methodology is arbitrary and not fairly and reasonably allocated to benefit all of the residents of GSCDD. Pelican Preserve residents should not be responsible for the payment of any portion of the Gateway Recreation and Parks, as we have never benefited from them, and nothing has changed to think that we would. Pelican Preserve is an age-restricted community and does not allow for children under the age of 18. Pelican Preserve residents were excluded from a survey of Gateway residents, asking if there was support for new parks, and the Gateway residents survey indicated less than 50% of the residents were in support. Imagine the negative curve if Pelican residents had participated. The capital outlays included the administrative portion of the methodology are substantial and will encumber Pelican Preserve residents with significant increases to their future taxes. I urge the Gateway Board of Supervisors to agree to mediation, so that we can determine what is the proper maintenance assessment methodology to avoid all of us from unnecessarily spending money on expensive legal options. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Next up, we have Tom Shaner, same agenda item.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Tom Shaner. We've spoken with you before. I'm going to do something a little different. I used to come with written remarks, and I can watch the glazed-over eyes. It happens. So I want to reiterate what Dave said, and just, it's an opportunity for us to try to get back together and work together. I would encourage you to accept our offer to have a mediation between the parties and try to resolve the differences. As I've spoken in the past, we have seen differences of opinions on the professionals who help draft these methodologies. Those differences can lead to significant legal issues. We don't really want to go down that road. We are prepared to go down that road if we need to, but I think it would be best for all of us if we could sit down with a mediation attempt, resolve the differences, and move forward. And that's really all I have to say. Dave covered the things of it, so thank you.
All right. Next up, I have Ed Hedges on 11, which is, was 11C, the capital budget.
Ed Hedges, 10532 Azura, and Vice Chair of the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. I just wanted to point out that we had a workshop last Friday, and we actually have two capital items. The capital sheet that's in the agenda has some other miscellaneous maintenance things included as capital, but there's actually only two capital, one for the road replacement, one for the pond restoration. And those are going to be forward funded through over two budgets, so I was wanting to clarify that, that that's what PPAK is paying for us. Thank you.
All right, and the final comment is a non-agenda item from Margaret Feinberg. On meter replacement questions.
Good afternoon, Margaret Feinberg, Stony Brook and Gateway. And they did come out to Stony Brook, and they did the town hall this morning on the meter replacement project. And I just had a couple afterthought questions on that. Are you going to have to install new communications for the meters to be read? And will those be read continuously, monthly, bi-monthly? How will that work? Because I know it's going to be sent here, I guess, or to the other office. And then, as far as rainy season is coming up, will work continue through rainy season as you can? Because I know there's going to be days that they won't be able to be out there if it's raining really hard, but are you planning on going ahead and still working through with the meter replacement program even through rainy season?
Chelsea, you want to answer? I'm interested in one of those, is that we have talked about this for years and years and years. We've always been every other month on billing. Under this new system, are we going to try to get back to one-month billings?
No.
Are we going to stay it?
Absolutely not. The communication, these will be cellular. So there, we've got endpoints that will be strategically placed throughout the community, but they're cellular. And then, yes, they are working day, night, six days a week.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, yes.
That, the deal on cellular is a critical component of these three, what do we call it? Trials, pilots, pilots, is to make sure that we don't have those issues that we ran into, having to go around and on every other light post, sticking up a repeater. So we want to make sure of that, but I think that answered the question pretty definitively, that I think we are going to be going to monthly billing.
Right.
Leslie would kill me.
So will those old units come off the telephone poles that are...
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not until we get to full deployment, though, because we'll still have older meters, but yes, when we do get to full deployment, they will come off.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
Anybody else?
I don't have anyone else, no.
Thank you. Local achievements, recognitions, anything?
Don't have any.
Nothing? Advisory Committee items and reports, any of those?
Most of my updates from PPAK will come up during the budget discussions.
Okay, moving right on. Approval minutes, we have the February 27 landscaping meeting minutes, the 27th safety and security meetings, and March 20, Board of Supervisor and Public Hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Who are we giving the first to you guys for your time?
Oh, Carol can have it.
Carol and then Doug for a second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent agenda items.
So I just want to explain the authorizing resolution. You approved the execution of the agreement for HMGP for that $1 million. It was signed and sent. As they were getting ready to sign it on their side, they said that they needed an authorizing resolution that allowed for me to sign that agreement, since we applied for it. So this...
On our behalf?
On the board's behalf, on the district's behalf. So this resolution, which, Tony, did you have a copy of it that we could pass around, or I'll print it?
No, I figured you would.
Okay, thanks. I'll print it for you, but ultimately, it's a very simple resolution, just authorizing me to sign that agreement, and then that way they will sign it.
Enter the chair or this.
Okay, what is this, resolution 2025 what?
Oh, I have it right here. Hold on. Georgia printed it.
Like to make sure that we have that identified, since we haven't got the document at all.
Could you give us the proper wording for this motion, please?
Yes, let me find the resolution number. What's the HM...
16.
What's the acronym again, Chelsea?
HMGP, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's resolution 2025-16.
16.
16, yes. This is it. And Laura just pulled it up.
Yes, on screen.
And this was the example that they sent to us.
And we modified it to, you know, adjust for the situation here. So if we go down to Sections 2 and 3, "The district chair or manager authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a federal and/or state emergency assistance. All actions shall be taken to comply with..."
That's not either or.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so Tony, could you give us the proper wording for this motion?
A motion to approve and adopt resolution 2025-16.
Aye, so move.
Is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oppose, Laura?
Apologize for the last minute.
And we moved 13 to 11, so is that correct?
Yes.
So we're now going District Engineer.
No, they'll have something next time.
Steven on?
No, next time.
Next time?
Yeah.
Okay. NA beside all these things. Admin agenda items, 11A, now do we want to take on the other?
If we could, I appreciate the board's consideration, because Counsel for Stony Brook is here, and Katie Burkey, I don't know if you've met Katie before, she's sitting next to Margaret, worked with Katie.
That's what you look like.
You have to put a face also on that.
So I saw Katie walk in, so I appreciate the board's consideration, I'm sure the client does also. But what you have in the agenda book is what we've been working on for the last couple of weeks, between the district and the Stony Brook Association and Counsel for both. And then, early this week, we had a conference call to sort of pin down what would happen with the monies currently in the OO4 fund. How could they be expended or utilized? So to avoid any necessity for applying them to the otherwise required general fund assessments, or because we can't give credits back to individuals. And the idea, though, is to have this property clearly by the time the board sets the high watermark for the budget adoption process, to not have to worry about funding OO4. And so the agreement they, I've handed out, document that, you can tell we worked on it up until 10 o'clock this morning, various changes were... What the edits that you'll see, if you just take this home, is adding some escrow provisions. The concept would be that, you know, you need to get U.S. Homes on board, and I'll be sending this out to Charles Mann tomorrow, in compiling all the documents and exhibits, is to have on June 15, 2025, have the quitclaim deed, the consent to the conveyance, the grants of easements, and any of the documents all executed and delivered to my law firm as escrow agent. And the documents, so therefore, we certainly have all those written documents in my possession as escrow agent. Then, the documents come out of escrow, and the deed gets recorded, the consent gets recorded, the grants of easement get recorded, the earlier of the complete pay-down, drawdown of OO4 fund down to nothing, or September 30, 2025, so that we don't have a funding issue for fiscal year 25, '26. And we've all worked hard on that. It was a good little head-knocking session the other day with Ellen Levine, and Katie Burkey, and the folks, JT, and Chelsea, Laura, and myself. So I just want to give you an update on it, and again, what's in the book, we've updated to provide for the escrow arrangement, to not have any issues on the budget.
Do we need to recognize Katie to have any comments that you want to make or anything? We're ready to go?
Oh, yeah. Katie is very good at sending back comments. She's not shy, and I'm not shy either, so it works well.
Me neither.
And do we need a, do we need a motion, or is this just an update?
This is informational only, again, just to let you know it's still on track, and, you know, the board, and Stony Brook's desire to keep this moving and moving, that's, just want to let you know it is. So that's all. Thank you.
You had emails, I mean, as it has before I came over here at 1:30, where there's still stuff flying back and forth. They are actively working.
We don't need anything to slow this down?
The idea is to try not to have it slowed down. That's great.
Okay, no. Thank you, thanks, Tony.
I think you were also going to let us know about conversations you might have had about what kind of work could be done to draw down all these funds that are still left in the Stony Brook. Have those conversations taken?
Yes.
And what are they?
That was part of the conversation, again, with JT, Katie, and Ellen from Stony Brook's side, and Chelsea, Laura, and I from the district's side. Chelsea, you want to?
Yep, so prior to Daniel leaving, Daniel, Mark, and Nathan had met with the HOA, and the HOA had identified four different projects, some being repaving of their main road, their sidewalk repairs, flumes, small minor repairs to their guardhouse. Since then, since we met, I have asked their HOA to prioritize those, because we know we have encumbered funds already with their security contract and things like that. So once, and their FPL, street lights, they have a monthly bill, so we got to project through the end of the year, some of Tony's time. The board had previously opined that it's 50/50, 50 between OO4, 50 between OO1, so we're trying, we have a follow-up meeting in two weeks to go over how much we project to be remaining that can be utilized for those projects. So the HOA is going to prioritize those, get back to us in the meantime of the...
And what was that amount?
About $150,000, I think, 150, between 150 and 160. I'd have to go back and review additional invoices with Laura, but staff in the meantime is soliciting proposals for those minor projects. But I fully expect that we will be able to complete some, if not all, of those projects using the remaining funds that are in that.
Even through wet season?
Yes, ma'am.
Coming up?
Yes, ma'am.
Even through what?
Wet season.
So by September 30?
Yes.
So by September 30, the work should be done, everything paid, and it'll be zero.
Yes.
So the recommendation would be to us, then, not to budget anything for Stony Brook for next year?
That is the plan, yes.
That's the goal. That's why it's structured the way it is, with the documents and escrow coming out of escrow from Hector High Water, September 30. That gives time, gives a level of certainty as to documents being signed and being held, and the level of certainty that they have to come out.
Still have a little loophole.
And Doug, are you comfortable with all this?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Katie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go back to 11A. Now B, community branding survey results, tagline direction.
Ultimately, we're just looking for your, to review the proposed taglines and make a recommendation on which one you would like to proceed with, if any.
Okay.
Comments?
Yes. I think if I had my way, I would like to postpone this. I think there are still some pretty raw emotions between the two communities, Gateway and Pelican. And to put a tagline under there such as, you know, Gateway to Paradise. I think a lot of Pelican people would have a tough time swallowing that one, or swallowing some of these other taglines.
Premier community.
And I'm not saying that we should never have a tagline. I'm just saying I think there's some pretty raw emotions right now, and to try and link arms and sing kumbaya, this is not the time, at least in my opinion.
Well, but this is for Gateway District. It's, and it should represent all the communities. Not just Pelican, not just Stony Brook, not Gateway Greens, not Hampton Park. So I don't understand, you want to hold for Pelican because of how it affects their brand, but what about all the other communities?
Well, our names aren't going to change.
Yeah.
Our name is what our name is.
I think there's components, like if it's Gateway to Paradise, if that's not, like if it doesn't align necessarily with a Pelican vision, I completely understand that. But we should find a tagline that represents Gateway as a district, as a whole.
Why is it even necessary to have one right now?
Three to two for you. That'd be a good tagline. Three to two for you.
Because we're doing a branding update.
Think about it.
We don't have to, I mean, if we say we want to hold, let the brand soak in a little bit before we come up with a tagline, I'm perfectly fine with that. But I don't think we hold it up for one community, because we're not, unless we have all of the sub-communities having a voice, and that's why we're here. We represent all of Gateway.
If we got 40% of Gateway says we'd like to wait. Is there 60% of Gateway says they want to move now? That's what we get. There's 40% of the community representing. Asking, just table it for a while.
I thought it was a third. It's 40, we need to go back and change our assessment methodology.
Not the money.
I misunderstood.
Voters. And to the point, let's get this Rule 6 and all this other stuff behind us, and the motions may die down all on their own and be a much better frame of mind. There's no...
I mean, I have no problem waiting.
That's all. That's all.
But we don't wait?
It's just waiting.
That's all.
Because it needs to be a collective voice.
I agree.
I don't care anyway.
So Carol, did you say just defer this, table it for a while?
Um...
We'll table it until...
Let's table it until June.
A month. A month from now. Okay.
Is there a motion, second you need to have that?
I made the motion. Table to June.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on.
Okay.
So June 19, we'll put it at the second meeting, because it's going to be...
Yeah, the first one, no, 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 not the first one. No, no, no. We might not even agree on Gateway after the first one.
I kind of like 32.
Three to two for you. We might call it Little Mexico, you never know. Okay, 11B.
Actually, you know, that's starting to grow on me.
I know.
So the fee schedule, we, this is just a draft of the fee schedule. We have to have a public hearing to adjust or adopt any new rates. We typically do this this time of year, and the timing is why we do it right now, is because of the soccer leagues and the rental of the Sherman Soccer Complex. They're gearing up for the fall, and so anything in red is what we are proposing to change. A lot of these are more for clarification that we've learned, you know, during operating, like, oh, how many? It's two per household, instead of just two cards, because then is it two cards per person, or?
Pretty modest increases. I didn't see any objection.
And then, I just want to call out, if you recall, like, three years ago, we did an analysis on the cost of the fields and the expenses and the revenue. This is the last increase of that plan that we had put into place. So year one was 49 an hour, year two was 58 an hour, and this is year three at 67 an hour.
And refresh my memory, what was the goal with this?
I believe it was to recover 50% of the expenses of that. I need to go and reassess what those numbers look like right now. Because we've had rentals of, like, increased party rentals and leagues, et cetera, so.
How much time do actual Gateway people use soccer complex?
Outside of league rentals?
No. Yes, yes. Not league rentals or anything like that. I mean, it seems to me, when I look over there, the majority of the time it's being used by other people.
Well, the leagues make up about 50%, though, the, all the, whether it's football or soccer.
Youth leagues.
Youth leagues, about 50% of that population are Gateway residents. And that, there's some give or take there, but on average, over the years, it's been about 50%. So when you look over there, like now, because if it's season and they're practicing, you could say about half of those individuals that are over there or utilizing the field are Gateway residents. Outside of that, it should be 100% leveraged by Gateway residents, or at least 90%. Well, if you come on a Saturday, on a non-league day, you see people out on the field or in the park.
Should be Gateway.
They should be 100% Gateway residents or their guests.
Are they?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think the usage is probably maybe 10 to 15% are using the fields that are outside of Gateway that we're not regulating or enforcing.
We could have ice in.
Well, I guess, do the Gateway people feel comfortable with supporting that for other people?
Yeah, because you can't...
In essence, or does the Gateway people want, in essence, to make this revenue neutral?
Well, here's the, so the other side of the equation is, if we were to limit non-Gateway participation, it would have significant impacts on the leagues and things, being able to...
Who would the kids play?
Being able to participate.
Who's the kids?
The numbers would go down, you wouldn't have enough teams per age groups, you wouldn't have enough, you know, volunteers. So that 50/50/50 is a good mix. I mean, soccer normally carries about 800 players per season. Flag, their numbers have increased year over year, so they're probably anywhere between 400 and 500. That number might even have jumped up to 600. So you need that significant amount of numbers in order to have enough teams for them to play themselves. And in some areas, you need to have, like, tiered, so you have an advanced U-12 and an intermediate, you know, so you're playing life for life. So you really, the more numbers you have, the more benefits the league to support it. Now...
I guess what I'm asking is, are you, are you guys comfortable with just basically 50% of the expense you're having to pick up, or 50% somebody else is paying?
Well, and, 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 this isn't so...
If maybe only 20% of your people ever use the soccer fields?
There's no way for us to ever count unless we ID who is a Gateway resident, who is not a Gateway resident. So for us, it's just, you're renting the field, that's the use. You're paying to rent this field for a specific time period.
Well, there's a bigger, there's a bigger conversation. If, if you have a program, a facility, in a perfect world, the program or the participants would 100% fund the O&amp;M for that, right? Parks and Recs, that barely, rarely, if ever, happens. Matter of fact, I think it's even very difficult to even get 50%. Most of them in the city and the county are operating at maybe 20% of fees over operating and maintenance costs. So we took a stance to try to at least get to 50%. So 50% is subsidized by the participants and the leagues. The other 50% is subsidized by the taxpayer.
So shouldn't we look to, in the next two, three years, to go to 75%?
It's possible, but there's a, there's a negative return there at some point, because if you raise the prices, and we could argue there, what we charge for league rentals and what the league charges to play for registration, that can bear. I think where we keep an eye on is if, if our percentage of fees in relation to registration costs, if that's 30%, 70%, you know, that's additional league fees, uniforms, referees, and then maybe profit or whatever. We don't want to get to a point where we're, where we're raising our fees and it, there's a negative impact, which is it becomes too expensive for kids to play. There's a negative return there. So we want to optimize our fees as much as possible, because we want to recoup, so we can continue to improve and make it cost-effective for all of Gateway, and to have good amenities for all of our Gateway people to use. But we have to kind of keep an eye, and we can't control this, because if they're profit or nonprofit, you can't tell a business what the profit margin is going to be. And we, other people might argue that. We've asked for books and all that stuff in the past, and it just doesn't...
Exactly the approach that, as I recall, about 10, 12 years ago, Bill Guy wanted to do.
Yeah, so I mean, we could argue that, but I think our approach should be to continue to increase as market predicts, you know, and that's what staff has been doing. They've been looking at other field rental agreements in Naples and other surrounding counties to make sure that we're in line, and actually, we're still probably on the cheaper end relation to most of those. But I don't think there's anything wrong with continuing to increase as it costs more, improve the fields. But we just have to be mindful that we don't hit a point where we're pricing out the whole purpose of the leagues, which is to give the kids somewhere to go and play. And so there's, there's got to be a line that we have to keep an eye on.
So the plan?
I would like to maybe take that 50% and now over the next three years, move that up to 75%. Because I don't honestly think the leagues have a whole lot of other options as to where to go.
Well, they don't, and that's the other point, too. League counties is at the low end of...
I don't know that we should be subsidizing just because we want to be nice guys.
The county's not creating, yeah, well, the league county is at the lower end, in the surrounding counties, for having sports recreational facilities. Go to Naples, well, they've got field availability. Go to Naples, well, they've got field availability funded by Naples and the county and a lot of private investments. So you've got two sports facilities with, you know, probably 15 fields, uh, baseball, pickleball, tennis, but that's all privately, or at least partly private or public.
Well, do they want to make that 45 to an hour trip down there based on traffic?
So we, we do have some leverage because we do have some of the, you know, some of the nicer fields in the area. And we should be paying attention to cost. My only point is let's not price out the kids.
Yes.
So I don't have a problem with what you're presenting today if you're telling me that this brings us up to 50%. Where in the future, I would like to continue that and go up to 75%. Where we can at least say we're recouping 75% of our.
Because just like Gateway as a whole, we're reaching the end of life cycle in some of the, some of our facilities. Lights, next couple of years, lights needs to replace.
Lights.
The fields, I mean, that, that turf is, is probably 10 years outlived its, its lifespan. And what is it, like 100, 200 grand per field to, to re-saw those? That's not cheap, uh, and, you know.
Yes, we, we can do that assessment and find out where we are, but this was based on from three years ago, the rates that we needed to get to. We can absolutely do that evaluation and, and have that prepared for the public hearing.
So are we?
And I do remember that, and that's fine. I'm not questioning this. I'm just saying I think we need to go a little further now, going out into the.
Are we needing to set a public hearing for this then?
Yes.
Hey, let me, let me make just one more comment. The way I've always looked at it is what is the total operating cost? What is the burden to the district? That's the number that we want to offset as much as possible. So if we're saying we want to be at a 50% recovery from, uh, the programs and, you know, leases and participants, that's where that, that's revenue. What is the revenue being generated to offset the 50%? One way is to increase your lease agreements. Another way is to bring in additional service offerings. And that's where I've, I've harped on a couple of times. We should be developing additional programs and services, uh, to increase.
What, what do you?
Well, let's, I, I mean, um, there's, there's times during the summer where those fields are vacant. You, you could run tournaments over the summer.
Agility programs.
You know, anything. You could, um, uh, you could run, I don't know, let's say, on, on the fields. Maybe you, uh, you do just different, instead of just soccer like football, maybe there's some senior leagues that you could do. Or partner with the different clubs, like, you know, Gateway's got, uh, a softball field, we have tennis courts, they're leveraged not 100% of the time. If we had a programs director that was creating programs for Gateway as a whole and running those, whether it's using our facilities or partnering with other communities to help run leagues at a cost, it's just how do we generate more revenue? How do we generate revenue? And the bucket isn't always just to increase the field lease numbers. We can grow revenue in other areas as well. Additional program services and all of those.
How, how much consideration have we ever given to turn the whole thing over to Lee County? I know we couldn't control who uses it.
We did it some time ago and it just kind of fell through the cracks.
I mean, get rid of the total burden.
Well, but I would, I would absolutely disagree with that, just because when you do that, you lose all control.
I understand. I totally.
You know, so then you're not servicing our Gateway, you're now.
But you're not taxing them either. If you give it away, then, you know, the burden of, of cost goes away.
Well, it might show what, what, what an opportunity is. On the other hand, it may not be anything.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Well, it would definitely release some of our burden, but I.
I don't know if Lee County's even, even interested in doing, but if we're trying to cut costs.
Lee County would probably do it, but they wouldn't take it over without like roads. We would have to make significant improvements to, to it uses.
But if we have a one-time expense, you give them a long-term burden.
I think that's an absolute no-no.
The other question is unrelated to the cost, but how are we dealing with Facilitron? Is it, have we gotten the savings we were looking for? Reducing staff times, activities over there and all?
I believe. Facilitron?
Yep.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, we haven't had to make a payment to them. Where are the other incomes?
Correct.
Didn't meet the threshold, we're okay?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's good.
We've been, um, I think the deposits that are coming over have been at least $17,000 a month, so we are guaranteed, we guaranteed them $100,000 a year. So that's like our net after the 10% after all of that. I've been getting deposits right around $17,000 a month, so we have no problem. We have, we've met our, our obligation with that.
Okay, is that a fixed for the whole term, Laura?
No, it depends on how many people rent and how many hours. It's different every month, but it's right around.
But the $100,000, is that per year?
Yes.
That doesn't go to 130,000, 180, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have some options to, to look at relative to generating revenue, because I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I'll just, I'll mention, um, and you'll notice when we get into the capital discussion, Doug hit the nail on the head. We, the sawed over there, the bigger, the biggest problem that we have is we are forced to shut down that whole complex in the summer to give the sawed time to recoup because of the hours that are used on it. And so if we, if we look at redoing and, you know, one, one field at a time.
Third, a third, a third, or whatever.
Yeah, well, there's five, four and a half fields, so if we just did one field a year and slowly took our time to upgrade the saw, I think that will help on the summer shutdowns and reducing that so we could have more programs, because that's when the kids are out of, out of, out of school.
And, and Bob had brought it before. It's, it costs more, but a lot of the new fields being created are all going to turf.
So it's, it's absolutely something to consider.
Absolutely. Okay, so we need to set a, uh, public hearing date.
We're requesting it be on June 5th.
June 5th?
Yes.
That's not a regular meeting.
It is a regular meeting.
That is?
Yes. It would be the same day that I'm hoping to have the High Water Merit.
When this building gets built, we're going to move out.
Yes.
The concession stand. So that will become available again.
Uh, do we need a resolution or a motion on that?
Just no motion to set the public hearing date.
Not necessary.
June 5th though. Okay.
That's the plan.
Any other discussion on this item?
Maybe at a future agenda, you could bring to us a program whereby we could start moving towards 75% or other options, county or whatever.
Yeah, you're talking about 75% of total, uh.
Expenses?
Total expenses, right, yeah.
But there, there's two, two components of that. One is the operating cost, which we're around 400,000.
How much was it?
About 400,000.
Just for soccer.
The other one is the capital cost of yet to be spent. We could be 2 million. So it's a big, big difference there of what we're talking about. They both need to come in because capital, like, I agree with what Doug, we got problems with lights and that grass is tired. It's just plain down tired.
Right. And if our plan is to, let's say, the next step might be, what's the pathway to 60, 70? I mean, 80 might be a stretch. That comes from two areas. One, well, maybe three. It, well, no, we could just say, how do we increase revenue? How do we increase revenue to offset the burden to the taxpayer? The other side of that, too, is managing the expenses. And I've always said, if we look at what we spend for landscaping, are there ways where we can reduce by 5%, 10% of our total maintenance fees because we're optimizing a different company or doing some of that stuff? So if you can work on both of those simultaneously, you can get to, you know, it may not have to be 60 or 70% because the total cost drops from 400,000 to 350, so that burden is less and less to the taxpayer. So that's, that's what, you know.
And I'm not saying that you do it now before we pass the budget, but maybe look at September or something like that. And, but start putting it in your mind that we need to get on a program because I still think we should not have to spend this amount of money without having to get more revenue for it.
I think the, the best time to do it would be after the fall leagues pay, pay this new rate, if that's, if that's, if that rate's approved. Then we'll have six months of data in order to figure out the projections. So, yes.
Well, I'd be particularly interested in future capital because that might really drive us to go to Lee County.
Absolutely.
I mean, at least like to be able to consider that, to get rid of.
Okay.
Because that is a pretty heavy burden.
We've had that conversation multiple times.
Let's go on.
Well, we used to talk about Rule 6 and we repealed that, so.
I got to come on the tagline.
They just kind of fell through the cracks. Uh, fiscal year 26, capital budget discussion.
Okay, so the first one on here is, is utilities. Everything on here is paid for by the rates, right?
Yes.
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
Enterprise one. So there's really nothing that we need to look at here, right?
Verify that it's got enough money in it to do it. Laura, is there anything in here that we need to be focusing on in, in particular?
No, because everything, especially the big ticket items are all things that we've discussed previously, so there's no, there aren't any surprises in here.
What about the, uh, odor control?
Uh, that is.
We got that in here now for the new dollar values?
That's in there.
Right here, this line, right here, the 97.
385, okay.
And then with these others, yes.
Yeah, the odor control really goes up in 27. Half a million.
If you choose to purchase. So if we choose to keep leasing, then that would, that would go away because that would just become almost in operations.
Seven upfront and, I can't remember what the number was.
I just did the PO and I can't remember.
Okay, I, I know what you're talking about.
So I just want to call out the force main and irrigation main project. We are anticipating, um, HMGP money for the force main component of that. And we'll utilize the connection fees as our 25% match unless we can get the CVBG money from the county. The irrigation side, which is an eligible, an ineligible, um, portion, we intend on applying to SRF for a low interest loan on that, on the irrigation main. So you do see a lot of large ticket items, they're either grant funded, SRF funded, um, but most of these items, you'll notice, are typical day-to-day, um, operations that we need. Valve insertions, things as we're exercising valves, sewer jetting, trailer, um, make things, make things easier on, on staff, so. But yes, these are all funded out of the water bill.
And I see at the very bottom, there's a whole bunch of, uh, tractors and trucks and whatever, whatever. And going out, do we have a policy for our, our vehicles? You know, we keep them up to a certain mileage or something? I don't know. Do, do we have a policy?
Historically, what we've, well, what I've noticed when I was doing the trends when we were, when we first started setting this, is when we, right around we hit that eight-year mark, it seems to be when we start to have a severe increase in repair bills with the vehicle.
I think it's hours more than mileage.
Yeah, it will. Keep in mind that the fact that they pretty much only drive around inside a gateway and they sit and just run a lot during the day. It's not like your car where you're going back and forth to the, you know, the gas station, you run to Tampa, you go to wherever, you're driving your vehicle. These just kind of stroll around inside a gateway. So it's not the best, it's not the best for the vehicles, but that's just the nature of the beast for what we use them for. So the reason we went with the eight years is because historically, when I was watching, that seems to be about when the repair bills start to rack up. And it's more cost efficient for us to just get a different vehicle.
No official policy, but that's.
It's a plan.
Just based on historical data, that's when I've seen the increase in, in repairs, right around eight years. Some of them go a little sooner, some of them we try and milk a little longer, but the average is right around eight.
Do you, do you have a, do you have a total? None of these have a total? Am I missing something?
She has a total, but it didn't print.
That would have scared you. It's a secret total.
I've heard that at home.
Yeah, I will make sure that that's on there for the next time. I'll have it totaled by, um, funding source, because some are capital, some are SRF, some is bonds, some is grants. So I'll make sure that that all.
Yeah, that, that, that's a big difference.
And Laura, if you would, please put the revision date and the annual date on every sheet, so I know what I'm looking at.
Yes.
If you're going to put the SRF, put the annual PNI, because that's real. Okay.
All right. So nothing else for utilities, we'll move on to public works. So notice.
Any, anything new been added to this from the last one?
There, I don't think there's been any changes to any of the sheets since last I do it. Maybe there was like one line that we did on the admin.
Oh.
What's, what's the basis of selecting some vehicles are under utilities and some are under public works?
It's based on who generally drives them, so these are vehicles that are normally driven by the public staff and the other ones are generally driven by the utility staff.
The biggest change on this one, um, was. So it's based on the RWW design, which he'll be here at your next meeting, where we'll be at 60% design. Landscaping down Griffin, so it's in 2027, it's not next year, but just forecasting to the future. Once we get the irrigation installed, we'll want to have the land, we'll want to do the enhanced landscaping down Griffin. So that's, that's the biggest change. And then, um, from, is there, is there a second page of public work? Most of these are, are bond related projects that are, we just haven't got, we haven't completed yet. But that's pretty much it.
The surface water areas.
That's a bond project.
And that's only one year, 20, because that's not very.
That's the remaining balance of that project from the 2023 bond series. So Laura's been keeping track of what we've spent within the past couple of years. And so from that original amount that we took out, that's what's remaining.
And how many bonds did we get for that in total?
I'd, I'd have to go back and look. We did those, we did a handful of them two years ago. We had the bigger, the biggest expense was running, um, FPL, getting up PL and running electrical.
Absolutely.
Uh, but what we have left, as suggested by the board, was the trunk line ponds and doing those next. So we'll stretch that as far as we can.
Well, that's why I was looking at 28, 7, 8, 9, 30. I don't see any money there.
No, so.
We're certainly not done.
No, we're not done.
Not even a start.
The plan is to utilize the bond funding and then it, within the waterway category of that 2023 bond, if there's any money that we can move, we'll evaluate then.
Nothing on this page affects Pelican at all.
It does not appear so.
Okay.
Is there, um?
I just didn't want to miss something.
I, I think we might have talked about this before, but the area down Gateway Boulevard, as you're going up to Stony Brook, I think it's the, I think it's Waste Management that owns that sign.
And that's Stony Brook.
You mean after you go past the road that goes back door to Pelican?
It just, it looks terrible all the time.
It looks horrible.
You know, they've got that chicken wire fence.
Dead, dead trees over there.
So they went and cut it, and then they left all the debris to rot. Most time that, again, that farm fence that they have up is covered in, uh, weeds and everything.
Is that ours or that's FPL?
No, it's, it's the Waste Management.
I think Waste Management.
What, what can we do to, to get somebody, that is just an eyesore when you come into the community from that direction. It's horrible. I agree with you. It looks like crap. And they're not doing anything with it. Nothing. They have moved back and they've almost got like a kill zone now. I think that's for the rats, uh, so that they can see.
It just, if they ever do something, like when they go and they clear it, they clear a certain line, but then they just leave all the dead stuff there. It just looks terrible. I don't know if we have any influence at all on that or anything.
Can we, can we give, can we give, uh, somebody at the county a call and, uh, see what could be done to put pressure on them to clean that mess up? If nothing else, they go in there and put in some hedge or something. Like, uh, big, tall, growing, uh, colossus.
So anything.
Anything at all, right. Something fair is growing.
So when you look out, you can only look at this angle and none of that trash that's on the ground, you don't see it. It's, it's pathetic, I agree.
For the record, Flavia can't, she's having technical difficulties, but she has joined. I have her on speaker.
So, so, uh, I'll make, can we go ahead and bring her in then?
Yeah, you make the motion to allow for participation by Flavia Wallace based upon exceptional circumstances. I'll make that motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome on. Okay, uh, going on. March the rap.
Okay, so the biggest ticket item that is new on here is, um, the additional parking at Sherman Soccer Complex. The EOPC that we have, uh, rough is half a million dollars from Techtrac, so. And then also the $160,000 for the pool deck resurfacing, we did get an actual quote for that. The Commons Amenities, that's bond, and then.
And that Pelican.
Not, not Pelican. And the Parks and Recreation Fields and Amenities, that is also bond.
Anything that you see bond on this Parks and Rec changes?
How many parking spots are we going to get?
A lot.
Is that to try and get everybody off the grass?
Yes. So it's got that back parking lot, it's basically gonna be.
Back by the dog park?
Yeah, it's the, like, that section, it's going to mirror. So we're talking, I don't.
Have we got a design on this additional parking?
Yeah, there's actually a change order in the task authorization we're going to bring, Techtrac's going to bring to you at the next meeting. So we have to pull the, the Public Works Storage Building out of that TA. But they're pretty much at like 90% design. We're ready to submit for permitting, a couple minor tweaks, um, and then go, go to bid.
Questions?
Okay, so of, on the column fiscal year 2026, starting with the half a million for the additional parking, how much of that? How much of that? Pelican pays fourteen percent of it?
No.
No, Pelican pays nothing.
No, you pay, if it says bond, you pay nothing. That's a capital.
It says capital.
Yes. That's the one where you're doing the point five of the expenses. That's, that's what that comes.
So we pay point one five of the project.
Estimated proposed.
So the only, well, there's only two things on here that say bond. Just the Commons amenities and the Parks and Recs, Fields and Amenities, the three hundred thousand and the two million, five, twenty nine, three, sixty nine.
So the line items specifically on here that would be impacted based on the objective assessment methodology would be the additional, half a million for additional parking, pool deck resurfacing, the ten thousand dollars in bleachers, community message board, the bathrooms.
And the twenty five thousand. So about seven hundred thousand roughly. Point oh five of seven hundred thousand is.
It's not, it's not.
My mind's on mash.
It's not a flat fifteen percent that it would be. Because.
Hundred and five thousand.
Fifteen, fifteen of seven hundred.
Will those be moved? Those are gonna stay under Parks and Rec though. They're not moved to the OO two account.
Correct. So the, where that, well.
No.
Yeah, that, that's where I have that silo tab where I was saying we have to share the common costs. That's where this would show in that.
So there are two line items in silo for Parks and Rec. One is capital projects, which pulls from the sheet, which you would pull, it would pull point one five of whatever the total that you would pay. That's, let's just use the seven hundred thousand dollar number. And then if the board chose to put any money into reserves, you would pay the point one five of whatever that number from reserves. And that's for every silo we're doing. So each silo, so public works, the cap, there will be a capital projects line that'll pull from this capital, public works capital sheet. Same thing with Parks and Rec. So you will see it on your OO two under Parks and Rec, capital project.
Okay. Honestly, guys, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that pool deck resurfacing for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars when Pelican already has five pools, that we have to pay anything towards that.
Okay, we've been, we've been down that road. We, that's, that's how we came with point one five.
Well, you didn't bring anything except the bill to us.
I'm sorry.
You didn't bring anything but a bill to us.
I think we agreed that the point one five was the negotiated agreement.
Yeah.
Unanimous.
The whole thing, unanimous.
We unanimously agreed to that.
So what, what we're looking for right now is, do you want to proceed with any of these pro, these projects at all? None? Some?
No, I'd like to kill the parking and the pool deck.
If there, if there, if there, if there are things that need to be done and their service lives are up, that's, that's our job to do.
I will say. I just wanna say the pool deck needs, definitely needs to be resurf, it, it needs to, it's falling apart. It's flaking off. We're talking about four or five inches pieces that are flaking off and there is water intrusion. And this is something that we talked about three to four years ago. And we just, all we did was paint it, you know? So it's something that it, it needs to be done.
So I, I, I will say if you nix any of those two, the pool deck resurfacing, it, it, go over there, please.
Sounds like a safety issue.
It, it is a safety issue.
No, really, it does. No, but I'm, but my.
We have milked it as long as we can milk it.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't do it four years ago. I'd have been okay with it four years ago.
That, that's our, uh, that's our job. We, 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 we just can't continue to kick can down the road.
Well, I mean, I can see where like for FPL linear park improvements for twenty five thousand. Yes, I suppose somebody could go and walk on the linear park and, okay, you know, that seems reasonable. I, I will move to take out the Sherman Soccer Complex and the pool deck resurfacing. Total of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Can we get some benefit on that? So when we talk about the, the Parks and Rec stuff, I think we need to understand the, the benefit and because if we're gonna invest, let's say if we're looking at, you know, five hundred thousand for additional parking or that money used to, I don't know, uh, redo sod, which one of those has the biggest impact? Which one can we potentially justify for raised fees for, for revenue? The parking to me is tough because we, there's not enough parking today and I don't know if there's any stipulations on that.
That's whipped cream.
Yeah.
We don't need whipped cream right now.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying, I need, I think we need to understand the benefit because if there, if there's not a clear benefit to do it now, then it becomes a project we do in a year or two years or we put it off. You know, and, and I think with these items too, we need to do some prioritization. What, what's gonna help us either improve, improve quality of service or, or amenity? Which is gonna have the most potential for us to justify increase in, in revenue or rental fees.
Is it a must have or just like to have? And clearly it can't be a must have because we've been surviving without it.
So I think just Flavia says she can't hear you. Can you make sure your mic is on that you're talking into it?
I think I'm here. It says on. It's on.
All right. Make sure you have your face right in it.
So if, if you don't wish to continue with the additional parking at Sherman Soccer Complex, then I will tell Techtrac to cease any future work on that.
Is today's focus of the workshop our capital improvement plan?
No, it's, it's all of it.
Okay. I think we should wait and have that conversation when we talk about capital improvement realistically, not just pull pieces out.
All items.
All items, you know?
Trying to get to that.
Then why, why are we looking at it? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I thought we were looking at budgeting. I thought, I thought this was a budgeting meeting for.
You mentioned Doug, the, uh, the, the field. Where, where am I looking at the?
Fields are in operating.
I'm sorry?
The field pricing is in operating. We had got an estimate for one field for next year.
Where, where's that at on here?
It's in.
It's in operating. It's not a cap.
Not capital because it's maintenance.
That's to redo the field?
One field, yes.
So that'll come under O and M as opposed to capital.
Correct.
So different funding sources, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I agree. Just wait till we have the whole thing for discussion.
You have a motion on?
I do have, I did make a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
No. I second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay, going on.
All right. Any other conversations for Parks and Rec?
Can't deal with it anymore.
Any other?
No.
No? Okay, moving on to the next category. You're gonna take administration? Uh, ultimately, the, the, um, we've got our IT. So that's the shared cost with, um, I believe utilities, the enterprise.
Yep.
Um, so that's our computers, monitors, laptops, things like that. Uh, and then the welcome monument, this was not budgeted as part of the admin building. So we talked about that front entrance welcome monument wayfinding sign. Um, I did get a, a guestimate number from a, a local company. They said two hundred. But as we get into actual you guys picking out what that looks like, that number could go down.
I, I thought that was gonna be the message board.
I have a question. The message. Wonder we had, I just have one question. What did we have allocated to redo the monuments on FY twenty twenty five for this year that we didn't touch?
In the bonds, there was three hundred thousand, but that money has been shifted over to, to the parks. Cause it was assessed as part of the same category. So there was, there were two, there were two message boards. There was potentially one for here at the Sherman Soccer Complex saying game tonight, board meetings tonight, advertising, whatever that may be. This, this one here under administration is for the administrative building. So you can, we can nix the one here or we can, and, and only do the one at the admin building and the commons.
Do we have costs on these?
I, I got a ballpark number until we get into the details.
Yeah, I wanna see what this looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can make any decision on, again, the cost and the benefit and what could we sell space on it? How does it become revenue generating?
That's a lot of money for that item.
Well, I thought that because the commons was right off of Gateway Boulevard, that that was going to be the monument and the message board. I thought that was one.
There's options for two. We can, that is this one. That is this two hundred thousand dollar one.
I'm sorry. I thought that was gonna be one altogether. It was a monument and message board, the same thing.
That's this, this digital message board, the two hundred thousand. The other one is for the Sherman Soccer Complex.
Where's it at in here?
Under Parks and Rec.
And what was the, what was the price?
Why don't we take that one out at least?
Go back to that one, Laura. Where was that at? There it is, community estimate, thirty five.
Thirty five thousand.
That, that's a big difference. That's, that's a big difference.
Thirty five thousand there and two hundred.
One, one, one of them is a widescreen and the other one is a.
You're building one from scratch, running electric, you're doing design, you're putting in a digital message board and the size. And then this one is just refiguring this, this little one, this little monument over here. So.
Oh, so the thirty five thousand is for this one?
This little one. Sure.
Just to put, and that's digital?
To make a difference.
I think we need to look at this more.
And two hundred thousand for the other one?
Yeah.
I mean, the wiring should come in as part of, we already putting.
Again, these are budget numbers that I got until we can get into the nitty gritty and you guys make, pick, pick stuff.
Let's look.
That it doesn't seem real.
To, to be continued on this, on these. Okay.
It's crazy.
Anything else on admin? Anybody have anything on admin?
No.
Falcon Reserve.
There is one change on this, the ponds here. Originally Doug, he had, he has an estimate of six hundred thousand dollars to do one of the ponds over there. And he was gonna do half of the pond one year and half of the pond the next year. And as a result of the P PAC meeting last week, well, the discussion, they combined these to just do it all at once because you got, you know, you have to drain twice, mobilize, demobilize, all of that twice. So they are going to do that all at, at one time and they're gonna offset, uh, half of the cost with a draw from reserves. So how they're gonna do it, the plan is to, to put six hundred on the budget line, offset it with three hundred thousand dollars from reserves. And then the next year Doug will put three hundred up there and then pay the reserves back. So they'll like front him the extra three hundred thousand for this, for the one year and then he'll pay it back the next year. So.
There's nothing in twenty twenty six that Pelican wants to use capital funds for.
Is pond thirty six the one over there that's on the, the north side of the road going over to Bredo that, uh, has got some serious issues?
The thirty six is by the golf course. Four, this is forty three.
Yeah, where's, where's the one that's, uh, got the serious, uh, problems on the north side of the road? I thought it was thirty six.
What are you talking about?
No, thirty six, we already did.
Thirty six is done.
That's the pond that we did the last year.
That was this year's.
Okay, what's the one that I went over and took at?
I think that's this one.
Couple of, uh, meetings ago. It's thirty six.
Well, there, we're having issues with the repairs on it. So that, that's different.
That's still under warranty.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a warranty.
Yes, that one was already, that one was done already. So those are just repair issues.
From a capital point of view, there's nothing.
So it's a warranty issue.
There's nothing on here that warrants capital expense by Pelican.
But these, all of these items.
Excuse me. Everything's gonna be done, but they're choosing, P PAC wants to do it within their O and M money.
That's what I was just gonna explain. Uh, because Pelican doesn't actually have a capital fund, like the general fund has the three hundred and enterprise has the three oh one. These items all transfer over to their O and M budget. So they're here, but they're not being assessed twice. They're, these just carry over to their O and M budget. So you'll see these same lines on their O and M budget with these dollar amounts. And this is just because they are, we consider them capital projects, but they don't have a capital fund. This is where we, this is where we accumulate them and then they're actually assessed and accounted for and tracked on the O and M side.
Paid for it under O and M.
Yes.
Okay. And this thing, this list was just bullet points. I mean, it was.
So all of the repairs that need to be done to thirty six of what I saw over there are all of considered a warranty issue?
Warranty, yep. Yep. And these are all things that, that came from the subcommittees. These are not things from staff. These are items that came from the subcommittees.
Subcommittee had no input on the sheet.
Hmm, I had conversations with every single subcommittee chair and that's where these numbers came from.
This did not come before P PAC.
I brought these numbers from the subcommittees to P PAC.
As capital.
As, like I explained, they're on the capital sheet because you don't actually have capital. They're not accounted for twice.
Then why do we have them on capital sheet here?
All of these items go over because they're large projects. So we track them on the capital sheet.
All right, Laura. All right, whatever.
But they all click, they're all.
We're not putting any capital money. That's the bottom line. They're paid for it under O and M.
The lines transfer over to the O and M budget. We consider them capital because of the cost, but they're paying for them on their O and M budget. They're different.
Any other questions on Talia Reserve?
No.
Okay, I think that takes care of the capital. We, uh, bringing it back to refine some of these items. Okay. I think we need to look closely, everybody needs to look at these closely before that next meeting.
Actually, the next item is staffing and the border FRS.
Which we already did.
We talked about that earlier.
So is there any other discussion or question on?
Just get with the staff and let's get some answers at May Day or whatever it is.
Yep, I have notes to do some surveys and get a little more information on that.
Talk to them before you have your Cinco and the bio.
I have a note to bring it up at the launch.
Okay, so besides survey, what else are you going to be doing?
I have a note. Uh, if we move pension plans, what are the one time costs? What would the buyback cost be? Could we use these dollars to give bonuses? Pull the employees regarding health insurance, pension, vesting time, or would they prefer to have it more as a merit? And I'm gonna ask them in a general way about those particular things at the May fifth launch.
Okay.
Does, does all of our.
Yeah, we, we also wanted to make sure that we captured, uh, any additional market data, other municipalities like for like, has they seen benefit?
Do, 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 do all of the staff understand what we're talking about on this FRS and X, Y, Z and all that? Do they understand it?
No.
But before we have a meeting with them, we might want to make sure they understand what they're voting on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk, that's what I'm gonna talk about at the meeting on the fifth is, uh, that's be like a Q and A. So they'll be able to ask questions. I give a brief overview of like a broad picture.
Lot of people will vote no on a change just for the hell of it. It, this might be in their best benefit to, to go with this.
From an educate, from an employee standpoint, it's a no brainer. It's getting something for nothing versus leaving everything like this.
Would you rather have something else?
Would you rather raise, increase merit versus?
There's where, there's where the issue lies.
All right, so recap, that was good recap. Any other things that Laura missed?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think.
Just the one thing Doug did.
Yep, contacting other municipalities.
I added that to my list.
Moving on back to the budget and to the allocation page.
We were at one oh two? Is that where we were at when we left?
We were on the allocation page.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Operational admin. So these are, this, this is the, the third of the half, or how it got split out this way. For admin costs, the reason it's not equal here is because this is just like my time, Chelsea's time, Randy's time. It's the administrative side that goes.
So it's unbalanced.
Yeah. So when we get, if we look, when we look at the four hundred budget, the actual utility staff is included in their budget. So this is just like the, the admin time that gets charged to, to the enterprise fund.
Yeah, we should classify that as like a tier one, tier two. Tier one is leadership or administrative. Tier two is actual.
Worker bees?
Yeah, anything under admin is us and then any, the rest is under utilities.
Or that, if we just define it as administrative versus.
Yep.
General staff. We don't have to explain.
So that's what all these things are here at the top. Um, you can see I was able to reduce our payroll processing fees quite a bit. I had some very extensive conversations with, um, paychecks and for this year alone, I think I ended up saving us about twenty thousand dollars in payroll processing fees. So, um, I did get that down quite a bit. I'm trying to save and not spend on things that we're not actually using.
And what we talked about a while back, did, did, did we find that, I don't know if it was Paychex has a performance management component in their suite?
Yeah. Uh, I'm actually looking at switching to Bamboo from Paychex. Their HR model is amazing. It is extremely user friendly. We can pretty much write all of our own performance reviews, make them look however we want. You send them out. The application process is a thousand times better than what we have now. So that I actually have a follow up conversation with him, I think in like three weeks. So the plan, it should be decided to go that way, would be to transition. There, it's two separate modules. There's the payroll module and then the HR module. I would transition the HR hiring module first because especially without the recruiting that we're doing, um, it will make things a lot easier for ma, hiring managers and whoever's doing payroll to work with it and the applicants.
And the onboarding process.
The onboarding will be much better. You can actually make offer letters for them to digitally sign through the platform, which we don't have the capability to do. And the cost is about the same as what we're paying right now. So.
Cause I think it's, it's crazy for us to talk about an FRS system. We don't have a, a good ability to measure performance.
So that, that's all part of the new package. So, um, but the payroll. So that, that's all part of the new package, so, but the payroll processing fee shouldn't go up, it'll be about the same as what we're paying now by telling me to put everything in. Again, these are up to you guys what you want to spend, I kept it flat from last year, this includes the, the, what do we call them, retention, longevity bonuses? For employees starting at five years, they get a bonus each year for, that they're here, from five to 10, it's, I think it's 500, and then at 10 it goes up to 1,000, and at 15 it goes up to 1,500. So we, we encourage employees to stay, so that's included, and then whatever is left over would be discretionary bonuses for performance or other things that would come up during the year. Obviously taxes are taxes, this number may or may not change depending on what you all decide to do at the FRS. Same, health and life benefits, we were able to get that costs held for two years, which was great, so we know the first two years roughly what our costs are going to be for that. And then we're campus, we're comp, I don't have a lot of options with that. The professional fees were a lot higher last year, we had a lot of expenses that we normally wouldn't have in a year, which is why I, we had the budget of the 61. But I found that we're only spending right around, the 20,000 should more than cover it, that, especially with all the easements and things that we've been filing, so that includes all those filing fees that I have to pay to the county. And just whatever other miscellaneous professional fees would come up. This would be when we have to contact our HR lawyer for different things that come up, so that's, we've been able to stay within that, that's, that's fair.
We have a separate attorney for that?
Yes, she, she specializes in HR law.
Yeah, that's the Suzanne Boy's partner, John Petanovic, if you recall John.
Yeah, we, we usually call Suzanne, so yeah, we have a separate lawyer for that, we don't call her very often. Not very often, but usually it's something that I have never experienced before, or it's something that I need to make sure that how we're going to handle it isn't going to get us in trouble, so. So this, this is a new position, this is coming next meeting to you guys, there's a TA for Tetra Tech to do some GIS work for us. Part of it will be able to fund about half through the budget from the professional fees for fiscal '25. The remainder will go under this category for fiscal '26, and that's to help us get the rest of our stuff into Cartograph, get all our GIS stuff updated, mapped, moved over, and in our, our asset management system.
Who are we using now?
No one. No one, they're doing a little bit of work for us now, Tetra Tech is a little, we did a little bit with Passarella, but it's mostly been Austin whenever he has time, and we're, we're falling very far behind.
Doesn't the 002 account?
That's yours, that's different, that's, that's your, that's your Pelican-only stuff.
Oh, okay.
So this is for Cartograph, so especially with the Pelican data, we're going to have to find a way to get that into our system, so that's going to require a little manipulating on our part as well.
So all of this is in what account?
So your system doesn't talk to Pelican system?
No, it does not.
We started first, Carol, we... The, the GIS, what is this, under what budget category?
Why don't we, why don't we just go to the Pelican system and...
Because your Pelican system only has assets for Pelican, it doesn't give us life expect, expectancies, it doesn't allow us to do reporting, it doesn't allow us to do tasks. It doesn't allow us to sign, set up like what we just implemented in March with the stormwater, it'll actually kick out a thing at the beginning of the month saying, these are all the inspections you need to do this month. So they go out and they actually go out and do their checklist right in the asset management system. Yeah, and based on, based on the conditions, it lets us know, hey, you're going to have to replace this in two years instead of five, you know, it helps us track all of those things, so that, that's why.
So you think this is a better system?
It's very extensive, oh yeah, this is a million times better, yes.
Okay.
Your, your GIS mapping is, is literally a map, this is an asset management system, so it's completely different.
Asset management.
Yes, it's an asset management system, which we issue work orders out of, yes. So it's not, it's not just a map telling us what is where, it's actually a way for us to keep track of all of our assets and the maintenance on them and all of that.
But does it also tell you what is where?
Yes. That's what this is, that's what this is for, is to help us get that in there, so.
Will Pelican be incorporated in that?
Yes.
Pelican will be in this...
Eventually, yes, yeah, that's the plan.
So will Passarella go away?
Yes.
We're very uninformed of that, that they're no longer going to support it.
Who's no longer going to support?
Passarella. Hang on, let...
If you recall with your subcommittees, Peggy was working, taking the lead, that the current system that you have, that ticketing system, that it's out of date, and it's going to require basically an overhaul and redoing and rewriting everything that's on there. It's a conversation I had with Will, and so we said, instead of rewriting and redoing that system, we've slowly been transitioning, we've got your ponds already in our Cartograph system, so we're slowly moving your assets that you have on that map over. But it's going to take more effort, we've got this, all of the stormwater pipes in, we're working on aerators. Slowly we'll get easements, all of yours that we've done, we'll get those into Cartograph, so we want to make sure we get all of our documented assets that we have out in the field, signs will get there eventually. Light poles, hopefully we're getting out of the light pole business, but anything that we have out there, that all ties into C Click Fix. So then if you're on Pond 43, or if you're, if you saw a street sign that got hit, you can do a C Click Fix and tag that asset, and it'll tell us exactly what's out there, so.
Okay, well, guess where I'm going is, P-PAC has a budget of 50 grand in itself for GIS, that should go away.
If they have one-offs that they want to do, like if there's additional easements that need to be done next year, but that's their purview, what they choose to do with that. This, this is going to cover the management of Cartograph and C Click Fix and getting all of the rest of the Pelican assets in.
If they have a need for a one-off, should they roll it into Cartograph next year? I see no reason to give Passarella 50 grand.
No, I, I don't think you should give Pass, I, I don't think...
Seems like I'm paying for two systems, that's where I'm coming.
I, I, the, the plan, my goal is to work with Peggy and get you guys transitioned over to Cartograph.
Well, really it's with Ed, but...
Ed and Peggy and get...
Yeah.
The, I know that the, Daniel was pushing out reports and what was coming in with C Click Fix, but the goal is to get that and then working with them to figure out what forward-facing, public-facing maps we can...
Because I just don't want to throw 50 grand at them if...
I agree.
We got this system.
Yeah.
We got, pick one or the other, whichever you better.
You do pay Passarella, I don't know what the dollar amount is, to host that map every year, you pay them that. I don't know what that number is, but that's something we can find out from Will. Yeah, so.
Short term, okay, all right. I just sold it 59, it says GIS, I took it literally, I wonder why are we paying to do it again?
Okay.
So maybe Pelican only has to host it or pay 50,000 maybe one more year?
I don't think that 50,000 is even the number, but we can find that out between now and, and your next...
Well, it's the budgeted number.
Yeah.
Maybe just help with the same as the last.
Five years, you're sorry.
Well, I guess I'm saying, are you going to be ready in a year or two years or what?
Um, I would say a year.
A year?
This will help, this will help get us there, if we didn't have this in there the way that we're doing it now with staff training, no way, so. Um, so the, the big change with this line, although the cost is a little higher, uh, this used to include the pool, it does not include the pool anymore, so this is truly, this is for our, our admin offices, it's the internet, internet at the admin office and then our phone system.
What's flop?
That's the Fairway Lakes Office Park.
So when I say I'm at the flop, you know where to call.
We call this the shop, and that's the flop, so.
Well, that's going to go away anyways, okay.
Yep, so, um, so that's, that's what that is, so you'll see the internet for this building is on its own line because it has fiber. And then I'm assuming, well, I'm going to have redundant internet at the new building, because we have problems where one or the other goes down, and if we lose internet, we're dead in the water, so. I'll have a good system like we have here with a lesser backup system, so this is internet for this, this office that we're going to run out of Griffin Office, and then six months at the new admin building. Our employee cell phones, I, I've been doing a lot of nagging and finagling and trying to get plans down and making sure we're on the best pricing with Verizon, so I'm confident I can hold that steady, even though we have more cell phones than we did last year, I've been able to get some of our plans reduced, to get us to, to maintain that. This holding the same, it's, a lot of these are the same as what they were last year. The water sewer, I actually evaluated, we did not spend that much.
So why does anything with utilities, rest stations?
They're building utilities, not utilities, utilities, they're building utilities. So that's like for here, it's our electricity, our water and sewer, and then others actually waste pro, falls over there, so, and yeah, it's trash.
Do you have anything in here that's, are you going to go through on these line by line?
Do you want us to?
I, 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 no, I'd rather, I'd rather see this from a 10,000-foot of items that are big-ticket items that have a justification for, other than a normal yearly increase.
Does anybody have any questions about the remainder of the page?
Sure, insurance.
Insurance.
It's three down from where we stopped, so, but that's a big ticket item, obviously.
But the reason that is, is I did, I figured a 10% increase on what we have now, uh, we have a drone, which that was like three grand, I think, that we had to pay for to have our drone insured, and then we are going to have the admin building for half of the year, so that's going to be a new expense. That's why that went up considerably.
Our, our tech expense, Janovi, is that 78K, is that just for support, or is there any hosting or...
That includes hosting, support, licenses, backups, all of that.
And are we happy with that, are we comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Were you looking at what item?
This one right here.
Item 54.
54, line 54.
And that's, we will continue to use them, they'll help us set up the new building?
So once we move to the new building, we're going to try to, try to be there a year and look at a holistic approach and see are the, are our needs being met? We have additional computers, additional space, technology, because we're going to be upgrading from our K stuff we have here, so, um, yes, we are very comfortable with that number right now, in the contract that they have.
That's a really good number, so, um, and the, the equipment that we have here, I've been slowly upgrading the servers and our billing computers and all those things, so when we move, that's all coming with us, that won't be in this building anymore, that's going to come with us to the new building.
Any other questions on any other items on the allocation page?
Can we just go down to the bottom? Okay. So basically it's going up... 990,000?
Um, no, about 300.
300 and some thousand, 350.
It was 1906 and now it's 2284.
Going from 19 to 22.
Yep, and the majority of that is because of the way that the staffing is calculated now, because we used to have public works and landscape and all that was under their own category, and now that's part of this. So the majority of the increase is actually, is wages, staffing, because it's allocated in a different spot.
Okay, and if we make a change in pensions, that would be another 300,000?
Yes, on top of that, correct.
So it'd be 2.5-ish yearly?
Yes, 2.6 probably.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing else on the allocation page, Bob?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment, that's fine.
All right, so you'll see those carry over to this page here, so this was, again, we looked at this earlier, this is, these are all the expenses from that allocation page, I'm just going to blow by these, this is just how they got divvied out.
So they just carry over to the percentages?
They carry over to this column.
There's the percentage, the percentage of it, so. Landscape services, does anybody have any questions? We did incorporate the tree line costs, so we had staff go do tree counts and based on our last year's contracts, and then we moved the Ameriscape numbers over here, so we did incorporate those tree line costs.
And what was the number that got moved over here?
206. 206,000. And then we did the tree...
Okay, so, but I thought they only reduced Pelican's landscape number by 160,000.
I don't, no, whatever, whatever moved.
It was an exact swap, Carol.
It was?
Exact swap.
Okay, then I'm wrong, okay.
That number came directly from Ameriscape.
Ameriscape.
Okay.
Like I said, we did tree counts, got estimates on that, and mulching, we, mulching was incorporated in your, in the Ameriscape side, so we didn't have to, to account for that, so. Oh, I might have added a little bit.
Three, that's 3%, that's why it was going from 200 to 206, added the 3%.
Anything else for landscaping?
Does, does this cover how often the FPO easement, owing that area?
Staff does that now.
Staff mows the...
Took that a cost.
Yep, we talked about that earlier while you were transitioning.
Anything else for landscaping?
Do we have plans to continue to expand what staff can mow, or are we just picking certain common areas that...
What's easy?
Picking low-hanging fruit.
Yes, the low-hanging fruit, yes. Things that cannot be damaged, driving a tractor. So again, you'll notice on every category, there's a capital projects and equipment line item, which should tie back to the project sheet, the capital sheet, and then you'll have to tell us if you want to put money into reserves, and what number that would be, or a percentage, so we can discuss that now or at the next meeting, it's totally up to you.
I have to populate the projects that are...
Well, it's 24 and 25 are empty on that, those two.
Because we didn't have those two lines, those are new this year.
But we never put it aside before?
We did, for capital project reserve, we did that as a total for all of the general fund, not by department, but because of the way that the assessment methodology is being done, and the way that the line items are assessed, each department needs to have their own capital projects reserve now, so like what you guys do with your...
No, I, I understand, but if we, if we put it in, it looks like it's all added, it's really not. There was some offset.
There was some last year in roads, it was populated on the back end, now we're just bringing it to the show and letting you pick.
So you're looking at a fixed percentage?
Or, or a flat number, it's your purview.
It's up to you guys.
So again, this goes into the landscaping.
Well, we need, I think what we need to know is to see what the number is that we need to have each year and then take a percentage of it.
And, and a swag for what we spent.
I will have that plugged in for you for next time, I don't have that.
If we have what, a, a swag of what we spent in those other two years, then you look at the next year, yeah, yeah.
That's what you're leaning to, then that's how Laura...
And what did our auditor say that we should have?
They didn't, they don't give a recommendation on reserves generally.
Well, if you have a capital reserve plan, they, they'll tell you what you need to make to avoid red ink, but seldom does anybody want 100% reserve, their capital reserve cost. That would be a big-ticket item.
I thought I remembered something about when the gentleman made the presentation, that like the first two years was like he was funding us to put like a million dollars for the site. And then it reduced down to like 300,000 or something like that.
That's from the reserve study, okay, yeah, not the, from the reserves, okay, yeah.
We'll go, we'll go back and pull that, that real, all that ties back to is our assets and what the replacement of those. Landscaping is kind of a unique one, because some, some places put it under operation, some put it under capital. Typically not capital.
Typically not capital.
Because it has a short, short lifespan, so we'll, we'll pull that capital reserve study.
Well, and I, I think when we had discussion about it, we said, rather than to do two big years and then the rest, we'd rather take the total amount over like 10 years, flatten it out, and that's what we would put in reserve.
Or instead of taking each...
Based on that reserve study.
Or instead of taking each light item, just take the total and take a percentage of the total and then move it around as you...
Funded 25, 35, 45, 50, whatever, yeah.
All right, anything else for landscaping?
No.
Waterway Management?
So this is where I had talked, this is one of the changes, why the, there were, the admin operations number was so high, this is one of the areas where those wages are now part of that, so all of this got moved under... Well, the first line that we actually have is attorney fees.
Any questions on the waterway management? You'll notice a couple new line items in here, um, equipment for staff, and then the, the shared flowway maintenance, Pelican's calling the shared flowway out on their side, we're calling it out on our side, so Russ can do his thing on the back end.
We're, we're talking about, uh, oh, 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 one, or the area one or area nine?
Area nine and all, and all of the flowways, except for six, Bobby had a question, um, please to the mic, go ahead.
No, it's okay, and I, I guess it's going to chime with Bob, I just saw the fish stock 10,000. Is that, is that a real number, is that three ponds? I mean, how much does it really cost for, like, what are we looking at, at that 10,000, what's that, what's that going to cover?
Normally, normally that's the budget and we stay within it and do what we can with it, but if you're, if you have a goal that you want us to accomplish X amount, we can get a proposal for that.
I'm just saying, because we have seen a decline population of the fish, and then residents have brought that up to us, and I would like just, if we can get in the notes for the next meeting, if staff can tell us, like, we're able to do, you know, fish stocking two ponds, one pond, I, I just have no idea what does that 10,000 do.
Okay, follow up.
Flaw, this is Bob. One of the challenges with fish stocking, and Pelican only buys fish from the state of Florida, but one of the challenges historically has been, how do you keep the fish? They're going to go where they want to go. Now, in Pelican, we have fish gates, so we keep them in our ponds, we don't do anything with the flowway, I don't know how you could do that over here. Something to think about, but you're right, if the fish go out, they're going to go out.
How do you, how do you determine, you know, like, how did, how did you guys determine that you needed to, to stop?
Initially, it was done, initially, we only put in sterile carp, and that was to keep the pond healthy, you know, they, that, that was needed for the health of the pond. You know, they, that, that was needed for the health of the pond. But then when our, uh, fisher clubs came forward, they said, we would like to have game fish. So, we went to the state of Florida, and we found the game fish that they wanted, that are all native, and we put that in there. But we take direction from our, we take direction from our fishing club.
When's the last?
When you go out fishing, then you don't do anything but drink.
Well, they're all catch and release, but yeah.
Um, when did you last do your last, uh?
I'd have to look at the budget, I don't know, we, we've been doing it for fifteen years now.
Can you look and see what your cost was and what the volume?
We've got that.
Yeah, how many?
Because I think ten thousand, I don't know, I don't know how many fish you get for ten thousand, but I know that almost every one of our ponds and gateway needs to be replenished.
We allocate-
They're all greatly reduced.
I believe the number's ten thousand.
Yeah, let's, let's check.
Ten thousand a year for this, in Pelican, and we got fifty-eight ponds.
We, we stocked it last year, so we'll pull that information and get it for you at the next.
You get a lot of fish for ten thousand, but they're small.
It was just under, in twenty-four, this is what we actually spent, it was just under ten.
But if you got your evasive species, then they're just feeding off your-
Well, the evasives, we throw out, let me go.
Anything else for waterway management?
I don't see any big ticket items, jumping out there.
Again, note, note the capital projects and equipment, that ties back to the capital project sheet.
Let's look at that.
Okay, nothing else for waterway management? Parks and Rec.
The, the parks and rec is, this includes the parks and rec and the pool staff now, so this number is all under here, instead of breaking it out under parks and rec and then, then under pool. Um, this does also include a tiny smidge of year in my, and I think the director's time, because I do spend a little bit of my time doing stuff with parks and rec, as does Chelsea, so this does include some of our time. Um, so, that is consolidated between those two areas, again, all the same number stuff for employees. Um, any questions on?
So, what about, um, like paying of invoices and things like that? You don't have any time switched over to parks and rec for that?
That's what my time is spent on, is looking at POs.
You pay the bills for parks and rec?
I pay all the bills.
Oh.
Well, Julie enters-
But I thought Julie did.
Julie enters the bills, I push the button and cut the checks. So, I review all the purchase orders and keep tabs on the budget and those kind of things, so she actually does the physical entering of everything. I just give it a double check and say, yep, go ahead, and then print the checks.
So, there's no other, what I would call overhead, um, type thing, um, that sh- should be accounted for in year in some way? Um, well, like, uh, the advertising, the, the thing, the, the guy, uh, it's a Randy. Should some of Randy's time be put in here because of the events that he does stuff in and all that sort of stuff, or not?
He's gotta be a percentage somewhere.
I'm just wondering if you've accounted for everything that-
He's not in there.
There, if I account one percent, which would be, what, twenty hours? There are very few contracts that Randy touches that are parks and rec related.
Yeah, but you got a lot of publicity, it's parks and rec related.
That's true, that's true.
You know, your Fourth of July thingy, you're at the pool, that's parks and rec, your, uh, fishing derby thingy, uh, I know, some of the other things.
You're doing good.
Some of your other thingies.
Well, I'll revisit Randy's time, even if it ends up being one or two percent.
So, we need to look at tweaking Randy's time.
Well, is there anybody else that?
I agree with that, we should be allocated in proportion.
Okay, well, really, the only other potential staff would be our admin staff over at Flop. So, uh, I know we've counted my time, her time, uh, we'll, we'll evaluate Randy's and-
Maybe George or-
George and Frank. Frank, so we can do that.
And if we, have we thought about, I know that, that what used to be the full ten, that position has more uh, the roles expand and broaden. We've thought about offering that as a full-time position in the future, because as we get the administrative building there, we'll have a presence and need someone there full-time. But right now, we're making up with part-time, uh, even if you, you're hybrid, you have maybe one full-time and two or three part-time. But it might give us another position where we can offer full-time employment to make it stickier for people to progress.
So, I'd say let's evaluate that next year, once the comments is up and functioning. Um, we have four part-time staff now that are capped at thirty-two hours a week, but, uh, until that, that gets constructed and meets the volume and needs of it,
Yep.
let's have that conversation.
H- historically, when we reviewed, um, going to part, or full-time positions there, it greatly reduces our flexibility with scheduling, and so, that's why we've been, we've been able to get, have a more, more, more coverage with, uh, the flexible schedules of part-time people versus having full-time people there.
But, uh,
So, I understand that.
And maybe not, not, not a hundred percent, but at least maybe have one position also will give you the ability to attract a little bit different type of employee in that position, someone that could grow, could take on additional responsibilities, that has a different skill set than someone just looking for a part-time role, that you're gonna pitch and hold in that. And the other thing is, um, I s- I think we should start looking at pricing out some security options.
It's, it's in here.
You got it here?
Yeah, it's in here.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
So, that was based off, that was based off Pelican Reserve's Wiser contract, that was just solicited this year, and I just took rough numbers for half a year for, um, basically the road roll, and that's, that's the projected number. That was, they would be responsible for um, only the third party, so an eight-hour shift, third shift, uh, and that would be responsible for the comments, once constructed, Fun Park, uh, Sherman Soccer, all of our parks, parks.
Sod processes, the daylight hours, there's about people.
So, so you're not gonna have a gatehouse, you're just gonna have a person going around checking on it.
Checking the various facilities, correct.
Mainly at night.
And, and we have nights and weekends. Yeah.
It's probably the biggest time.
Weekend, especially Sundays.
Okay, go on.
Okay.
Any other questions for parks and rec?
And, uh, does that security?
No.
Are we paying for the, does that include a vehicle, or are we looking to purchase our own vehicle on this side?
We just went through that, you're cheaper, better off leasing it. Your costs.
With, with the security company?
Yeah. We, we paid the security company, we had a car, gave it to them, and it was killing us on insurance and everything.
I mean, the only thing is, like, that's great, but how intimidating is a Evo or a Prius going around gateway?
Well, all they're supposed to do, if they see a problem, is call the police.
Chevy, I forget what you call them, but, but it was more effective with the security and having the lettering on it than ours, that just says Gateway Greens Community Association.
Yeah.
And all they're supposed to do is to call the police.
If I remember Tony's lecture to us, they can only, um, observe and report.
That's correct.
Observe and report, that's it.
We'll double check to-
Can't do anything else.
To make sure that the vehicle costs were included in that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I just wanna call out the positive.
Oh, for the, uh, sod field.
And you're talking about, you're not talking about doing the whole thing?
Oh, no.
You're gonna do it one at a time?
Yes, ma'am. That is, that is per the county's contract with JSM, so that not only includes, um, the sod itself, but addressing any irrigation issues, any additional dirt that needs to be brought in, uh, that is-
So, this is one, basically one field?
Yeah. Can, can you get turf pricing on that, just so we can compare apples to apples?
I can, yes, I can.
Turf pricing?
I can tell you what that was, one sec.
And if you have it, I'd like to see the actual quote.
Yep.
Now, is this, is this sprigs or is this sod?
Yeah.
This is a sod.
Sprigs for, if it's Bermuda, it's probably sprigs. But if you do Bermuda sod, that is expensive.
Irrigation heads, spray out existing turf two times, row the tide, uh, reverse till, um, sand over field, laser grade.
Is this sod, replacement, you're talking about a detailed sod?
Sounds like sprigs, the way it's going.
The feminine Bermuda grass rolls.
Oh.
So, it's sod.
Rolls.
Yeah. Um,
That's expensive.
And, and can we just look, the problem that we have over here is, there's certain times of year when it's muddy or it gets dry, and that Bermuda, because it doesn't have a deep soil base to enrich it, or even more importantly, have deep roots, we have patchy marks. A simple solution that a lot of complexes do is they just seed it, they overseed it with rye or something else that's quick growing, that provides substance, it looks good instead of patch marks, so, uh-
In the winter.
Really, anytime, you know.
Rye's typically in the winter.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, not necessarily have to be a rye, but, you know, uh, because like after a season like right now, or when the season's over and you've got all these patch marks, they should be coming in, they should be overseeding right now, so it's green, uh, as we move forward.
Check my map.
Anything else for parks and rec?
Yep.
I just have one question on account, we're talking before about buffering the landfill site. The district owns a sliver of land along the funny shaped piece, you know, along the, right there, that blue? We've got required that, we acquired all of the FPL easements.
I think, yeah, that's, that's not the area that we're talking about. That's whole land, the landfill went in and cleared a strip along their vents, and it, they just-
Okay, you're talking about different location?
Yeah.
I know they sprayed the weeds and the fence, so it's down.
This is gateway border, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, public works.
As you can see, like I mentioned earlier, again, contributing to the increase in the wages under admin acts, all the public
Any questions for public?
I blacked out the sign.
Any, any questions for public works?
Public works do things in parks and rec?
Um.
Irrigation?
That's our landscape. Uh, I think part of Angela's time was under-
We'll evaluate that.
Drainage.
Irrigation should be-
Let me talk to Mark, he might, he, they, he and his team might do minor, like repairs if there's a, um, there's a toilet. So, we'll evaluate that with you, I was just about to.
Anything else?
Public works? None? No comment?
Alright, cool. That was blacked out, this is included in the parks and rec numbers for the staffing. Um, any other questions about? You can see they have their, they have their own internet and phone.
Bobby, did you have a question?
She's a straight man.
Okay.
The repair and maintenance, that very last item.
Mm-hmm.
We've only spent thirty thousand this year, but you're, what, a hundred and ten thousand?
That was in fiscal twenty-four, that we spent thirty thousand, we used to have separate line items for all of these things that are in this note here with the chair materials, the chemicals,
Oh, and you put them together last year.
We just lumped them all under, under repairs and maintenance, so if you see the budget was a hundred and ten thousand for twenty-five, and we're pretty much on par to spend that this year, with those, we just combined several lines, gathered, put in our maintenance.
And you're gonna spend a hundred and ten thousand?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Do you need a raise?
Chemicals are not cheap, so they keep going up, yeah.
I was gonna say, the chemicals are, are expensive this year.
Anything else for both?
Public safety is control, release.
And so, that's it for O O one?
That, this is just that service. Just things they-
Alright, you guys ready to go to Pelican?
So, these are your share.
Any questions?
Yeah.
These are coming from your subcommittees and P-PAC, so you're, they're being vetted twice, and then, um, people were pushed out the agenda for P-PAC, they meet next Thursday, waiting on any input or changes that you have here, but if you don't have any, we'll have the agenda tomorrow with-
This, this document is a summary of all the changes, well, there's just a handful that were made at the P-PAC meeting.
Yes, anything for the-
Slide it down so we can keep looking.
Okay, so, at some point, we had put sixty thousand in for the hours that somebody's supposed to be doing repair stuff over at Pelican. It was, uh-
Forty hours.
Forty hours, I'm sorry, it was sixty thousand dollars. Is that in here yet, or is that in public works now, or where is that?
That's included in this number.
In the hundred ninety-seven thousand?
It is not a, only dedicated person here paying a third of a half of public works. So, where we're tracked only to forty hours this year, and that's all you get, nothing more, nothing less. Next year, there are no restrictions.
So, if you need sixty or eighty or ninety hours a week, that's what you'll get, we don't have to track and say, oh, we already put in our forty, we'll have to come back next week.
Okay, and the percentages of staff time, y'all's time, is the same as last year, or has been changed, or what?
This is the third of the half.
Goodbye.
That's what you're paying, is a third of the half, which includes public works, which includes your maintenance person.
Oh, so we're not doing the twenty percent of this one and twenty-four percent of that one, and?
That was what the board unanimously decided to handle, how they decide to handle staffing for next year. Fifty percent goes to utilities and then fifty percent gets split.
Fif- fifteen to enterprise.
Fifty.
Fifty percent, I'm sorry, fifty to enterprise and then a third and a thir- a third and two thirds.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than parks and rec, parks might be, isn't that silo?
That's correct, okay.
Anything else for Pelican?
That's it, we covered everything else?
Nope.
Oh, enterprise.
Four hundred, you guys wanna go with four hundred, which is the utility fund? Any questions about the utility fund? You don't see any, you don't see any revenues yet, because we gotta finish putting in our expenses, and then Steve looks up and do his math on his side.
But this, where you can see here, these numbers align with that.
Only, only big one on this one is the eight percent add-on from the county, correct?
I actually put ten in, because they'll, they'll have our raise again before we get to the end of our fiscal year, so I padded it.
So, you got a mid-year deal?
Yeah, and they do it in July, and our fiscal ends in September, so we'll have three months with.
Any questions on enterprise?
No.
That's it, that's budget.
Make the, make the changes and updates.
Let's see how it looks when it all comes together.
Yes. I had to get through that part first to get to the next part, to give you, start doing the calculations with the tables and all that, so.
What, the one comment I had from, and I've mentioned it before, is if we had actual hours of time that staff was devoting to their duties. If we had a system and you said you would look into this, uh, similar to what an attorney does or an accountant, when somebody calls, I would still very much like to see some options rather than the seventeen percent of the fifty. Because I don't really believe we're using that much. And if we had that kind of a system, it would show up, Brett Randy does things for parks, as we talked about earlier. So, I mean, I hope that's not being totally dismissed, that we are gonna look at some ways of doing that.
So, research those sorts of systems.
So, that might change the future way we do this.
So, you will see, uh, the, the plan at your next meeting, the May fifteen meeting?
Yep.
Um, the numbers, Russ, we're trying to wrap up the numbers in the next week on our side, because we're gonna just double check and bear hide and then any changes that you discussed today, and then Russ is gonna be working on his, on his end in the back, um, putting on, putting in all the, the silos and doing all the formulas based on the assessment methodology. So, it is our, it is our intent to have the actual, what could potentially be assessed.
So, we'll have it seven days before the meeting?
The, the goal is to have, the agenda has to be posted seven days. We get, we post on Thursday, as long as Russ gets us that information. If not, worst case scenario, it will be up on Friday. I will be away, but I will be taking my laptop and working out any issues with Laura.
So, at the next P-PAC meeting, which is a week from today, is there any chance that they just can have the O O four budget?
O O two.
O O two budget? Um, with everything put together? Not just, not just subcommittee stuff and whatever, but the whole?
So, the plan is tomorrow, we're waiting on your feedback today, first off tomorrow, kinda post what we have, we have, we haven't incorporated the parks and rec stuff in there yet.
Mm-hmm.
By next week, by the actual meeting itself, will we, we'll have those line items in? It's not gonna be, we're a week out now, which is off.
I know.
So.
And Russ has to do his thing.
By the time they get to their meeting, we'll have all of the line items in. I don't know that Russ is gonna have the calculations by the meeting, but we'll try.
The, the, the line items are already there. Uh, they just don't have numbers in them.
Okay. Well, but at the last meeting, you said you had certain things hidden. You, you weren't showing everything. And what I'm saying is this next time, will they see everything?
Well, I can show you the. This is all their stuff. This is all the things they saw before.
I'm, I'm not so concerned of the tax implications right now.
No, but what I'm saying right here.
What I want them to see is every single line item and what silos those might be in.
Yep. So they had, they had seen all of that with the exception of this addition of this Parks and Rec down here.
Okay.
And the expenses for the things I've added in, but again, there's no numbers in here because we don't count those yet. I have the totals in the O-O one. I don't know what your share is gonna be yet. That's what I need Russ to do. So the lines are here, but there's no dollars because they don't know what they are yet. I'm hop- I'm hoping by the time it comes to P-PAC that green field will be populated. Right now, I don't know. I don't know. I know what the total is. I don't know what your share is.
I, I, I would feel very com- I would like to make it happen.
I, it's on Russ. Yeah, it's, it's on Russ. And if it's.
Because they're meeting next Thursday and.
You're not gonna have it for that meeting.
It's an all or nothing. But once they get calculated, the, the whole thing just spreads. So when it's done, everybody gets it. It's not gonna be just for Pelican. When he does the calculation, it'll be done for OO one, it'll be done for OO two, it'll be done for everybody. It just, once he touches it, it goes.
You're talking about Russ.
Yes. So.
Our goal is to.
I, I'm hoping I'll be able to show that to you. I, show them that at the meeting. They won't have it in their hand prior to the meeting, but I'm hoping I can pull it up like I did here.
Right. So at least they can.
Or at least by Friday.
Look at the whole picture rather than just subsections.
Correct.
And then try and imagine what has to be, what in between.
Right.
And mainly my concern would be the silos.
Right.
So seeing everything as a whole and then seeing where the silos go.
Yep, and I actually have a tab that summarizes all of that. So once that's populated, you can see how it was parsed out and then it'll show on the, on your OO two, the effect by individual line. But then there's the whole tab that shows like this expense one here, this expense one here, this.
Well, because they won't have another meeting till June.
Understood.
And that'll be, you know.
Right, but we have time, yeah, we have till August, I mean, to have them tweak their budget. So they're, they're setting their high water mark. But I have.
But you know, Carol, the only thing that that P-PAC can control are their three areas of ponds, safety, and landscaping. The rest of it.
Operations.
The rest of it. What's the other one?
Operations. They have an operation.
And, and op, not, part of the operation. The rest of it is a mystery until we get it back from Russ.
Anything else?
I don't.
Is there any other questions about budget? Like we've got all our parks, capital, staffing, numbers. All right.
Check that capex closely.
Thank you.
District manager.
Um, I do have a couple items. Um, I have to, we had some damages over this past weekend on the, on Gateway Boulevard. A kid went off mudding, off roding with his truck, mudding, mudded up. Sod, this damage went on the flowway.
The flowway.
Went on the flowway. So I just, I need your blessing to press charges, so that way we can recoup the damages on that. So I'm, I'm asking out of you.
Was there a police report?
Yes.
Yes.
He was.
He had to have a police report because he left his truck where it stuck with the mud.
So Flavia, JT noticed it. Flavia went out. She called me and sent me pictures. Um, I did, did, we worked together. We did trespass the, the guy. Um, we were following up with sheriff about pressing charges under cr- as criminal mischief, but we had to work on price proposals for the damages. So we sensed on that and it's about sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars worth of damages because on the flowway, it was the TRM and the rocks.
So it's a felony.
Yeah. So anything over a thousand dollars is a felony. So on, under criminal mischief.
Was it a, was it a resident?
Yes. Twenty-two year old kid.
One of my, one of my, one of my better ones.
And we're gonna go after felony?
Yeah, we all say where he lives, but.
Do we, do we need to do the felony if we, if we get the money?
The ultimate, the ultimate decision is up to the state attorney's office to decide whether or not to pursue. Um, but, but they don't want to be treated as a bargaining chip in these things. And they, 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 their usual, my, my experience with the state attorney's office, when I worked there for six years, was if you wanted us to prosecute, you, you, you raised to go to full.
If you don't want to suppress charges, we can always try to pursue it through our insurance and see.
But is our only interest getting our money to repair everything? If he does that?
And sue if he didn't.
Do we wanna?
If you're coming down Gateway Boulevard, heading south, and you do a U-turn off onto the FPL easement, drive down the Blacktop Road and off the Blacktop Road, go over the canal coming out of Stony Brook, do a left going down into that deal with your big duly truck? And try to go a hundred yards up that deal tearing up the canal, I wouldn't give him a second chance. That's not just being on the easement and just doing a couple of documents.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, doing a couple of documents, that's one thing. They're going up and doing what he did. And there were three trucks because I went over.
I'm not suggesting we don't get renumerated.
It's ridiculous.
I'm just wondering whether we wanna put a felony on the kids.
Yeah, not that, I mean.
That's all I'm talking.
Just, just announce a flesh, not, not a pound.
Yeah.
They gotta learn. Can't fix that kind of stuff. That's ridiculous.
So I'm just looking for your blessing on doing that.
I'm making a little schedule, had to press charges for criminal mischief to state attorneys too, not.
She making the motion? I'll second the motion. Motion is second.
Question. The motion, the motion is to press charges regardless of whether he offers to pay?
Yeah.
Is that what they heard?
Criminal mischief.
Okay.
Sheriff will deal with it.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Post.
Aye.
Aye.
You sent me a name? You got his name?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Everyone else said no.
No. Bob said no.
Three, two. Three, two.
You said no.
I, yeah, I don't wanna press criminal charges.
You said no, you said no.
Okay.
Everyone else said yes.
All right.
Okay, got it.
I did mention, Flavia, you might wanna mute yourself. Um, I did mention earlier in passing, we had two resignations this week in our utility, one being a meter reader, one being an operator. So we're actively with those positions. I also, uh, we made mention in the past about, passed about L retiring. Um, I think I've talked to a couple of you individually about how to celebrate her tenure here at the district. One of the ideas that was mentioned was naming the linear park after her. Um, I don't know if you've passed the John Yarborough Linear Park. All it is is a, it's at the entrance way, it's a sign and it said John Yarborough Linear Park or John Yarborough Park. About doing something like that for L or our linear park since it doesn't.
Yeah, and, and I love the idea because I think, one, it kind of represents the time and probably the place that she spent the most around the ponds and, and in nature, there's preserve there, there's the ponds.
Good place to take a scope free.
And it also starts to build or at least identify the FPL easement as a linear park. So I love the idea.
If you, if I get your blessing, I'll get proposals on putting that similar structure to the John, John Yarborough over in your park sign.
It's an arch, yeah.
Yeah, the, the arch, um, and if that's what you wanna do. If not, I can look.
I, yeah, I, I would like to hear how much.
Okay. All right, I will do that. Um, lastly, let me go grab our new public, our new Public Works Director. His name is Paul Flores. Uh, his first day was.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. Um, welcome in. Uh, so Paul comes from the county. Um, I've known Paul for eight years, I think, if not longer. Met Paul originally with Lee Tran, then he moved over. Lee Tran is all housed by Lee County. Um, you jumped around, what, to Solid Waste and then LCU?
Yes, just Lee County Solid Waste and, um, Lee County Utilities as well.
Yeah, so.
And that's how I know him.
Please help me welcome in Paul, and if you wanna say, say anything.
Absolutely. Uh, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. For the record, my name is Paul Flores, and I'm honored to serve as the new Public Works Director. Just to give you a little background, I bring about twenty-three, maybe twenty-four years of public service experience. Throughout my career, I've, um, led hurricane recovery efforts, managed capital improvement projects, and overseed day-to-day operations with a focus of safety, efficiency, and of course, community service. Um, I'm excited to continue, um, the success here at Gateway District, and I appreciate the confidence and support that was given to me to be selected for this role. I just wanna let you know, I'm fully committed, committed to the team and also the community, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right.
Hit the ground running.
We will keep you busy.
I warned him of that.
Yes, we did warn him.
So, um, in the meantime, while he, he is transitioning and getting acclimated in this role, please reach out to me. Um, again, I'll be on PTO next week, but you all know you can reach out to me on my personal phone. Project-wise, I'll be overseeing projects and slowly as transitioning those over to Paul. Um, we do have a project manager position that Paul will be actively recruiting for to backfill that. Nathan's last day was yesterday, so, um, lot of learning to do. Fortunately, we're wrapping a lot of these projects up. Um, and we're coming towards the tail end of our, our fiscal year, so, uh, he's learning budget right now as we speak, so, uh, but.
Well, Daniel was very organized, so you will have big shoes to fill in that spot.
Absolutely. I, I, I do believe that it's a really solid, very dedicated team here. I'm just here to support them and also to help them out, so without a doubt. I'm, I'm committed to the challenges and, uh, see what we can do to try to, uh, make some improvements.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. All right. Um, that are, those are the only couple things I had under district manager items.
Tony?
Uh, yes.
Back to, uh, we already took care of, uh, A, thirteen A. We deferred that earlier. Uh, thirteen B.
Yes, this is a, a document titled, "A Request for Mediation," uh, Precise, Precise Mediation. Relating to adoption of the Gateway Services Community Development and the methodology. In reality, it's a demand. It's not a request for mediation. It's a demand to resolve this matter under the terms that they outlined because it states right there, this mediation request outlines the basis of our claims, release, and the terms under which PPC is willing to settle. Then you go on to the next page. It says, "In consideration for the," you know, et cetera, "he agrees it will not pursue a legal challenge." Basically, if the board makes the two changes addressed above, one and two, and, uh, and, uh, other, so long as other changes do not occur to the amended methodology. So in, in my opinion, it's not a mediation, mediation request. We've not seen their expert opinion report. They don't even cite that they have an expert opinion report. Uh, in my opinion, in my experience, I don't see any. My recommendation would be not to engage in this because it is a demand. It's not a mediation request because it, it's basically capsized as an all or nothing. Because they talk about, should this mediation request not be satisfactory result, resolved, and then they again talk about possible litigation. But again, I look at the beginning. Outlines, this mediation request outlines the basis of it, like, and the terms under which they are willing to settle, and they go to, and that's, those are the terms. So. Anyways, that's just my recommendation. I think that's that's right.
On the motion, or I make the motion that, uh, neither staff nor legal counsel be further involved in this mediation consideration.
I'll second our motion given, uh, what Tony just said.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion.
Okay. Tony, I can understand as a lawyer that you see certain words and they mean certain things to you and you, you know, you, you start putting the guards up on our behalf, and I appreciate that. But I don't think it would hurt to have a meeting. I'm not saying a mediation. I'm not saying anything other than. What harm would it do to have the two sides get together and have a meeting? And maybe nothing will come out of it. But, and. I have never found a problem with sitting down and at least talking to people. At least you start to understand where they're coming from. This kind of just shuts a door. Your recommendation and the motion just kind of shuts the door on communications. And I think there's a way to not call it mediation, but to just sit and have a meeting. What would be har- the harm in that?
Uh, go ahead, Flavia.
Well, first, first I wanna say.
First of all, I was asking that of Tony.
That's not a decision of our attorney. He's made his recommendation, and we've got a motion on the floor to not do anything more on this.
You're not gonna even talk to people?
We have, yes, we've done our job. We went through four months of negotiation and you two consented to this that we've got. I am not gonna be a part of going back because if you're gonna go back, I'm gonna go back and point one five is off the table. We're going to one. So just watch what you ask for. We negotiated in good faith, the five of us. I am not reneging on what I did unless we go, go further down this road.
Ed, do you wanna let Tony answer, or you want?
Flavia. Well, Flavia. Flavia means good. That's Flavia.
I, I just, I just wanna say, let's call it exactly what it is. It's mediation. So let's give the respect. If they call for mediation, mediation, Carol. It's not a conversation. And since all the conver- since this going on for months, not once have them come in, the attorney came in to talk to us, and we talk about, oh, it's not, you know, in a workshop, and again, we saw nothing. So, so I'm totally in support of what Tony's just, you know, um, guidance is on this one.
Yeah, and to answer Carol's question, it's, it's ultimately a policy decision by the board, but, uh, we've had many conversations, you know, staff with counsel and with other folks, uh, PPCA with regards to methodology. And again, we've, they've articulated, there's been an articulation that there's an expert out there that differs with the district's retained expert. The PPCA has seen every document that the district has because of public records law, because of what we did, very open and public, whether or not some people may disagree or agree on the ability, uh, but it was probably, there's plenty of opportunity to make comments in writing and in person. I, I would like to see their expert's report. I keep hearing that there's a report, but I've not seen one. And so to enter a discussion without being presented what their basis for asserting that the methodology is incorrect is, is, I think would be an exercise of futility, quite frankly. Additionally, when the board sets the budget hearing, it also sets the assessment levying, the assessment allocation, the assessment imposition hearing. So when the board sets the budget hearing, that's when the mail notices are on. That's when the big S in the paper, the public will have another opportunity to look at and come in and object either in person or in writing in advance. Their concerns for the budget, their concerns with the allocation of benefits, their concern with the allocation of assessments, the loving and imposing of assessments. That's what we did back in twenty twenty when the board revised its methodology, following the same path now. So there'll be plenty of other opportunities. And so again, it's couches as a demand, quite frankly. Words do mean something. Carol, you're right. And I guess that's the lawyer in me. My wife goes crazy when I, she says, you're being too precise. I go, I know. I get in trouble otherwise. Um.
And so I often accuse John of cross-examining me.
Sounds familiar. I've been told. I'm not understanding. Okay. Uh, but, uh, so that was, that's my guidance to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I can understand, um, where your guidance is coming from based on the fact that you are the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
But when we come to, to August and there's the public hearing on the actual budget. It's gonna be a public hearing again. It's not gonna be a conversation. It's gonna be people talking to us and we don't say anything. And if it was anything like the last public hearing, um, opinions and stuff that were expressed there were not really taken to heart. People knew exactly how they were gonna vote afterwards and they made no. They, they weren't even, even trying to hide it. They didn't even express empathy or concern. I still don't, and obviously, this, this motion is gonna pass. But after that, why can't we just sit down and have a meeting?
There's nothing preventing against board's policy decision as to whether or not to have conversations. But I believe we've had conversations. Chelsea, we had. Regards to the methodology and talking to.
I just don't wanna waste the money.
I'd like to hear to answer that.
If I'm wrong, let me know.
Has there been meetings?
Phone calls and conferences.
We have a meeting every, every two weeks.
We have not, we have not discussed with their professional hired consultant.
But with their attorney and, and their.
Yes, we've had multiple meetings with their attorney, trying to resolve and go through some of these issues. So ultimately, it is a board, it is the board decision.
Oh, I understand that. I understand.
It's not the consultant's decision. It's, it's.
We've not seen a writ, any reports.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
Ed, you're railroading this again. We're still discussing. We're still discussing because as far as I know, there has not been any type of interaction between PPAC and Russ.
Not the board.
Russ did have a conversation, brief conversation when they were going back, he and.
I thought they couldn't make that meeting.
They, no, they didn't. But when they were going back and forth, we were trying to schedule it. They had a brief conversation, if I understand. This is what Russ conveyed to me, and I'm just articulating this from secondhand from a month ago. That those two had a brief telephone conversation and cleared some of the air. Now, we never were able to, because of timing and scheduling, we were never able to have a formal sit-down, nor was anything provided from them, which I believe we have, we make, we've requested. Again, to Tony's point, we've, everything we do is in the open, it's in the sunshine. So from a staff perspective, semantics, medi- from a staff perspective, semantics, mediation, that, that raises flags to me, I'm not an attorney. But I have concerns if, because ultimately, the board has to make the decision based on your professional consultants, economists. So that, what the meeting, what they're, what they're asking of and what the end outcome, what I believe reading between the lines is what they're desiring to get, won't come from a meeting, it would come from this board and with Russ. So although it would be good to discuss and see where they're coming from, the decision-makers would not be the ones sitting at that table.
We agree with that, nobody's saying that, I don't want to change it, but just wanted to hear them out.
Well, I think my, my, my position here is, I don't disagree with being able to sit down and have an open discussion, but we've been working on this for months and months and months. There's been ample opportunity for someone to voice their opinion, to have your expert be on the record, come in this board, we meet every two weeks.
Doug, I don't, I don't.
There's not a formal meeting request.
I don't disagree.
More open than being able to come in here, sit at the podium, put a public request in, or we would have even put an agenda item that said Pelican's rate expert to give them 15 minutes to. We've been offering that forever.
I know you sincerely believe that, but from the other side of the table, they feel that they've been shut out every, I'm just telling you what they're saying. That they've been shut out every step of the way because when we had workshop decisions, they were not invited to participate. They, they were allowed to hear, but they didn't really.
There was no request for your expert to come in and participate more.
Well, nobody gets that, Ed, but you got.
We don't deny people the ability to be, to speak at public records, and that's in the sun.
And we graciously hear it, we totally ignore it, and then we vote. That's what we do, we're not listening, we hear it, and then we vote, and that's what this is going to be.
Anytime during that three-month period, because I literally know is I got some scathing emails coming out of Pelican's.
There was never.
Nothing ever provided any documentation of an expert on their side of what we was doing wrong, not, nothing. Absolutely not.
Nobody says anybody's doing anything wrong, but they wanted to offer alternative ways to look at it.
The statute is very clear. This board has a large magnitude of ability to enact a.
Yeah, I heard you loud and clear when you said you're going to revisit the 15% and go to a dollar.
May I make, may I make a suggestion? May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I, I say we deny the mediation, but you invite them and put them on a scheduled meeting as an agenda item. Schedule it, and if they show, they show, they don't, they don't. And then that way, it's in front of all five of you, they can come say their piece in front of the board, have any comments that they want.
But three minutes, I mean.
No, no, you do it as an agenda item.
We don't do that to anybody else, nobody else. You do that and Rod's saying he's going to be light lit up like a Christmas tree.
Wait a minute, I seem to remember that the Stony Brook Association came and sat at that table with chairs around the table and had an association meeting in conjunction with our meeting at the same time to go through a lot of the issues over in Stony Brook.
I can't help that, what happened, happened.
We have done more.
I'm going to end this discussion, we've had, we got a motion, we're just beating a dead horse. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
There's a dead horse here, there's no doubt about it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Flavia, how did, Flavia, how did you?
I voted yes to deny.
Okay.
Not to have mediation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this was, this was only not to have mediation. If Flavia wants to take and have something else that would invite them in, but again, the three minutes, that's, that's, that's what they get. We don't allow that to anybody else.
I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed at all to inviting them in, and I, I'm not opposed at that time allowing them a five-minute or if, it's, you know, we have allowed a few minutes to other people, so I'm not opposed that I do want to hear and, and, and just move on since we already made the motion and passed on this.
Yeah, would, if, if that thought process, are we going to have Russ here so that they could have dialogue back and forth if that's what we're doing? Otherwise, if it's just reading a speech, that's a waste of time.
Yeah, having Russ come in.
But if Russ was there to.
He's fighting himself. He's not going to do that. I mean, there's no.
He'll do whatever we ask him to.
If they had a report that they had from an expert to give us and in and point out what they have made statements of, that this thing was.
What are you so afraid of?
No, sorry?
What are you so afraid of?
Here's, here's. I'm not afraid of anything.
The issue is, is the timing of this thing.
But they've been asking for it since last September.
Give me a second. We operate in the sun. Our dates, our timelines have to be projected out and documented in the newspaper, all of that. Pelican has known about every date and deliverable for months and months. There's been every opportunity for FishCon or your expert or someone to come in and be on the record and to say, this is, I do, Pelican disagrees with the current methodology for these reasons. We have a report that's contrary to what your expert is saying. We have legal counsel that feels there is a legal precedent for this, this, and this. There's been ample opportunity, and you don't need a mediation meeting, you don't need to have an, I mean, we could have done an agenda item, it would have been fine. All of this could have been done months and months ago.
They've been trying to do it for months.
We have never rejected once to have Pelican come in or give them the opportunity to speak or the expert. Matter of fact, we have requested it multiple times.
But what we have done.
Expert opinion come in and present.
What we have done every time is they come in and they voice their concerns.
Residents?
Yeah.
They're not experts.
They're not experts.
I'm telling you what, I must be stupider than I think I am, but anyway. They're trying to understand in a dialogue with the methodology guy. Did you consider this as an alternative way to do it? Is there something else? We have allowed them to come and speak, I completely agree with that. They come and they read the thing, and we nod off and they say, oh, your two minutes, okay, you go, because there's been no consideration, not since the other meeting.
It's one thing if, if we, how many residents do we have come in that question how we bill, how we put policies for ponds and lakes? And some residents may have a value opinion and may be educated. But if you want us to take action, then you have an expert, you have someone that has some.
And they've tried to do that.
Who?
FishCon tried to do beat with wire, they had.
FishCon has, the door is open right here every Thursday.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about. Time to touch the board. I've never seen him, I don't know.
I've talked to him, he hasn't prepared anything.
I don't know that he has or hadn't, but I know they asked for a meeting between him and Russ to explore other options.
I just think the timing, and I don't disagree, we, these are conversations we should have had months and months ago, if there's a disagreement. After the fact, it's just a really hard time for us to go back and resurrect all this stuff. Because, you know, and, and to be quite honest, my tolerance for even sitting on this board moving forward has, has completely fallen off because I feel like every time we're in a room, it's Pelicans resisting because they feel like they got to pay for something. I don't even feel like we're looking at the best.
What do you mean pay for something?
We're, we're not even looking out for the best interest of Gateway anymore. Because anything that comes up that Pelicans got to pay for, it's an automatic no.
Well, yeah, it's, it's very difficult for the Pelican residents to swallow that they're paying for a park they'll never use and a swimming pool they'll never use.
What about Gateway residents that don't either?
They live here, Ed, we don't live here. They've got five, they've got five pools over there, they've got conservation.
This is a waste of time, we're just going in circles.
Do we want to move to Agenda Management?
So I'm supposed to tell my kids they can't afford to swim in because Pelican has spent 20 years and they've got six pools and 20 pickleball courts, but my kids can't afford.
No one said that.
Doug, let's go ahead with Agenda Management, please.
I don't want to pay for it, if I'm using something, I'm willing to pay.
All right, so on Agenda Management.
Pelican resident feels the same way.
The next meeting, we have, again, budget discussions between now and August. My annual review, make sure you get that to Tony by next Thursday. I will be out Wednesday, I will be out of town, but be happy to take a call with you or when I get back, we can set up some FaceTime one-on-one.
If you need anything for that review, let me know if there's like documents or anything that you need.
What's that?
For my review.
For my review.
Next week to Tony Wednesday.
And then the next, next meeting, we will have RWA here to go over the 60% design and the 60% landscaping planting, so that will be a dog and pony show. And then we've got the storm sewer award, but is there anything else you guys? The last President's Council meeting was a very, a very disappointing turnout.
You didn't get agreed on that, it was a disaster.
There was more staff and supervisors than President.
So I would love for us to reconsider the frequency of those meetings, maybe going to once every six months and hosting them here because we paid for that room. And to have three people show up was, was.
It was disappointing.
Yes, so I would like for us to consider that moving forward, please. All right, anything?
When, when is the next one scheduled for?
The next one is, is Octo, is that?
No, July.
July in Hampton Park.
No, we shouldn't have that.
I would suggest that we cancel that one for sure.
Absolutely.
Because not that many people are here. What would be the next one after that?
October in Arborwood.
Okay, why don't we just aim for that one?
Okay. Flavia, you said you agree?
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
Okay, that's all I had, do you want to go to supervisor comments and reports?
Bob? How much?
No.
Tony, how would it be possible to put together a conversation legally? So nobody is stepping on anybody's toes.
Again, having a meeting, having a gathering is just, again, it's a policy decision by the board, what kind of guidance or direction they want to give staff as to who to meet with and when to meet with and how. And again, I go back.
Is, would it be improper for Carol Pankow to call up Russ and to call up Mr. Fish, whatever he is?
FishCon.
FishCon and say, can we have coffee together?
No pro, no legal provision against that.
Okay. There is no legal problem.
Absolutely not.
A good step, Carol, is if there is a report or findings, if that was submitted to the board so we could look at it, we could read it and have maybe, you know, our expert take a look at it to see if there is some contradiction or if there is, you know, something that we didn't consider. Right now, we're flying blind because we don't know.
That was the road we were hoping to go down.
That's, that's part of the issue, is like, we want to have a meeting, but we don't know what we're talking about. And if there's an issue with the assessment or the process, we have no foundation to determine whether or not we should revisit anything or make any corrections. We're, we're flying with zero information.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, two things, one, Carol, I would suggest because of what the status is right now, that before you have a conversation with Dr. FishCon, you call their attorney. We, we request the consent of their attorney for you to talk with Mr. FishCon because he's a retained expert.
I have to try, I have to try, Ed. We've already gone well over Russ's budget, and if Russ is going to want to be compensated, and so if you're wanting to set up a meeting on behalf of the district to have this meeting, Russ is.
It wouldn't be on behalf of the district.
No, it's on behalf of Carol.
Russ would have to agree to that on his own time out of his good heart.
All right.
And again, you, again, because PPC is represented by counsel. I don't know who retained Dr. FishCon, whether it was PPC directly or the attorney to preserve the work product or attorney-client privilege. So we, I would suggest out of bounds of caution because how the tenor has been all along, quite frankly, that the consent of PPC's attorney be obtained prior to any contact with Dr. FishCon. But second, I think what's important, I kept thinking June 15th to June 5th, that's when you approve the budget and you set the high watermark, and that's when everybody, public has another opportunity to show up and say, listen, we don't like how you're doing your budget, we don't like your categories, we don't like the silos, we don't like your assessment. They can comment then, and then they can do it again in August or July whenever they hold the hearing. So there's plenty of opportunity for Dr. FishCon to appear and or PPC.
So when Russ calls me and says, hey, I have this, I have this request, my response to him is, it's on your own accord, the district's not compensating you for your time. If you choose to meet with them, that's, that is on you. We're clear with that.
Yes.
I.
And Carol, you're free to contact, there's plans, you're not a seller, you're planning on calling.
He's responsible, he's responsible for the verbiage.
Now because I don't want anybody to say, ooh, you can't do that, Carol. So I want to know all the rules that there would be.
I think if you, if you want to do that, give me a call so that I can call Jennifer and say, Jennifer.
There may be.
I think that's money in the water, I think if Carol, as an individual resident, wants to reach out to two individuals and establish lunch, lunch, it should be Russ and FishCon's opportunity to let their legal counsel know whether or not they're permitted to have that.
No, I disagree only because she would be calling her capacity as a board member, she's a resident, but this is a board.
But she's not acting on behalf of.
She's acting the way of her.
But she is a board member, so she is a client of, the board and the district are my clients.
Even as a resident, she's still a board member.
Yes.
She wears that hat.
But I can't imagine.
I can't imagine Russ.
So, so how much, how much does Russ charge? I want to know how much the lunch is, I'd have to look.
Go someplace nice.
Mickey D's.
Is that expensive?
I'm sure. If you want, give me a call. But Carol, if you want to pursue as far as having Dr. FishCon there as part of it.
Not as a board direction.
Can I finish, please?
Well, they voted majority to not have a conversation, to not do this mediation.
No, no, she, the idea is Carol was talking about having a conversation with Dr. FishCon and Russ White. Not mediation, just a conversation, correct, is my understanding?
Yes.
There's no legal provision, that's not mediation, that's, and, and she is a board member, is free to do that. My only comment was that. My only comment is that PPC has an attorney, PPC and or the attorney, sorry, Dr. FishCon is a consultant. So just as a professional courtesy and a matter of caution, only because the approach that's been taken, I would suggest you get the consent of PPC attorney for you to contact Dr. FishCon.
So that doesn't limit Doug from doing the same thing. Doug could do the same thing.
Yes.
I mean, if it was me, if it was me, I would just invite FishCon to come into the board meeting and state whatever it is he wants to state.
But again, after we get to.
Because it does this board no benefit at all for Carol to have a conversation, and I doubt either one of them is going to agree to it, but I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to squash the idea and purpose because I think it's in very good faith and it good-hearted to try to get people together. But if, if Pelican wants the board to hear what their expert is saying, well, get your expert in the room so we can hear what he's saying, it gets put on the record. It's not, it, it's not at, you know, the ale house.
I'm pretty sure we're going to hear what they have to say, but what I'm trying to avoid is doing it in court. That's all. No, no, it's not my, it's theirs, you know, they have the right.
All right, any, did you ask Flavia?
Yeah, Flavia, your turn.
Me?
Supervisor comments and reports?
I don't have any supervisor comments, that's what you're asking me.
Okay.
Are you back in Brazil?
If not, motion to adjourn.
All right, thanks.